Ready to begin?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you need a motion, Madam Chair?
I would no, I'm no, I'd just like to bring them the call of the meeting to order. It's 5:46. And could we have a roll call, please, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes, Kathy Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Here.
Uh, James Pearson.
Here.
And that's it, right? Luke and Donna are not here.
Uh, yeah.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Cowett.
Here.
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to our vote to go into executive session. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Could I have a second on that?
A second now.
Mr. Pearson? Um, okay, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
All right, we will see, um, the rest of you, um.
On the other side.
When we come back on the other side, okay, see you in executive session.
Okay.
I'm assuming, Mr. Pearson, you're ready. Um, so I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee meeting. I have 6:01. Um, and I would like to have a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you. Um, I'd like to, um, move on with the, um, mission of Coventry Public Schools. Member Pearson, could you do us the honor of reading that mission statement for?
The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you very much. Um, and just to let the attendees and the public who are listening, um, know that the school committee met in an executive session for about 15 minutes. Um, two of our other members were not present because they're delayed. Hopefully, they will be joining us to this open meeting shortly. Um, I just need to report that the members considered, um, homeschooling requests in our executive session minutes of 11:19, 2020. Um, that being said, um, we had two votes. They were both unanimous, three to zero. Okay, so, um, the next agenda item, it was the election of officers. So we're going to need to wait until more of our members are present for that particular item. So I'd like to move on to, um, a vote to seal the executive session miss minutes. So is is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make motion that the rec- that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant pursuant to sections 42 dash 46 dash four and 42 dash 46 dash five.
I second that motion.
Thank you. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Uh, yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, which was our reference number two, um, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make motion to approve the consent agenda agenda as presented slash amended.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
The motion carries three to zero. Uh, moving on to the public agenda, the remaining items on the agenda are open for, um, discussion from the public. If the committee, um, calls for a motion and a vote, um, before we actually call for the vote, members from the public may, um, address the committee with their comments. That being said, we're going to move on to the introduction of the human resource, our new humor, human resources director, I believe it's human resources director. Uh, Mr. Levis, would you like to start this?
Yes, um, and I just want to, you know, Ms. Coloney is on now.
Oh, good. Oh, hey.
So I want to, I want to introduce, uh, I'd like to introduce everybody. She's on our panelists tonight, uh, Ms. Margaret Card. And Margaret is officially our new Director of Human Resources for the Coventry Public School. So, uh, she's already had a warm welcoming, uh, to our central office. Um, she's being supported by, uh, Ms. Andy Rios, who's done an outstanding job for us, but, uh, I just want to give a little introduction. Then if Margaret, if you want to say a few words to the public and if the committee has anybody, any, if anybody has any comments they want to make. But, um, I mean, we're so fortunate to have Margaret join us, uh, as our Director of Human Resources. Margaret has over 30 years of experience, uh, you know, facilitating, uh, human resources department, um, in a nonprofit educational setting at Wentworth Institute of Technology. Uh, she has a vast experience in employee relations, uh, collective bargaining, working, uh, very positively with collective bargaining units. Uh, she has vast experience in terms of benefits, including healthcare, uh, payroll, and was a significant member of the leadership team, looking at the references that she had in terms of her time at Wentworth. People viewed her as as a strong part of that leadership team. One of the things that struck out, stuck out, uh, for me was also her sense of humor. Because one of the things we're looking for to be part of our team is you need to be able to laugh. I mean, I think to be part of any team in life today, but Margaret, uh, like I said, is, uh, was a significant part of the team and we we expect her to be a significant part of our team moving forward. And 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 two really important factors also is Margaret is Coventry resident and she's a parent of a of a high school student. So one of the things in her letter of introduction talked about just her additional value and commitment to the vision and the mission of Coventry Public Schools. And so I think that's anything, everything we could be looking for, someone to support our team and knowing the challenges we face, but the challenges that we look at is opportunities here, they're not barriers. So I want to welcome Margaret aboard and, uh, want to introduce her to our our community as Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. Um, I am really looking forward to working with Coventry Public School System. As Craig said, I am a parent and a Coventry resident, and I really believe in education and our school system. I've had very good experience with it and I'm really excited to join the team and help the employees, um, which in turn helps all the students. And I'm open to any questions if anyone has any.
Um, thank you so much. Welcome, Margaret. We're so happy you have joined us. Um, I usually ask the individual members if they have any comments or, um, whatever. So, Mr. Florio, would you like to make any comments?
Margaret, welcome aboard Wentworth Institute of Technology. Great school, Margaret, great school. And I I look forward to working with you. At times I have to call you, but, uh, I may have to call you, who knows? But it's nice to have a friendly face as the new Director of Human Resources. Thank you, Margaret, for accepting your position.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Florio. Uh, Mrs. Coloney.
Margaret, congratulations on your position and we look forward to working with you. I'm, uh, very happy that he was able to get someone so qualified so quickly. So congratulations and good luck.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Coloney. And finally, Mr. Pearson.
Uh, Mrs. Card, welcome to Coventry Public Schools, uh, in an official capacity, not just as a parent. Then, and, uh, I wish you nothing but success. Um, so welcome to the team and and looking forward to, uh, hearing good things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Any final remarks, Mrs. Card?
No, I think I'm all set.
Great. Welcome aboard. Um, okay, um, our next item of business is the special education presentation.
Madam Chair, I don't want to interrupt, but there is one hand raised from the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I forgot. Thank you. You know what? I I should look at the participants. That likes, that reminds me to look. All right, thank you.
Um, and just as I said it, they lowered their hand. I apologize.
Yeah, I see it. I don't see any hands raised, raised either, but I should have asked.
Yeah, maybe it was an error. I apologize.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, so, uh, Miss, Mr. Wilson, did you want to just start us off? Or I don't know if Mr. Levis wanted to begin?
Yeah. Are you, are you going to put it up on the screen, Brad?
Yep.
While you're doing, I just want to say that, um, you know, I, as a former Director of Special Education, I said I was, um, when I came into Coventry, I see there's feedback and somebody's, uh, microphone, but, um, just special ed has always been, you know, our, my, my goal's always been, uh, and I think many people, it's having all kids agenda. And, uh, I just want to thank Brad and his team for really pushing that agenda forward. I feel that we have a very open communication with our parents and we'll continue to encourage parents to reach out to their teachers, um, principals, special ed department, and, um, I look forward to tonight's presentation.
Let me, uh, Craig, can you see this right now?
Madam Chair.
We, we can see it. Yes, Mrs. Coloney.
Before we start, weren't we supposed to elect officers tonight?
We were, except that not everybody is present yet. So until everybody's present, we have delayed that particular agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, you know, welcome, everybody. Welcome, School Committee, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Levis. Um, I'm going to give you a update on the Unified Learning and Support Services in Coventry. You know, it's, it's interesting. This, this wasn't that easy to do. Uh, you know, we were tasked with giving this update and, uh, everything's been changing so quick. It's tough to tell this story when we're not out of the woods yet and it's, you know, it's tough to tell the story because it's not really one story. It's really, you know, 750 different stories because, you know, every, every child that we service really has a story unto themselves during these last 10 months. But, um, you know, my, my, my goal here is to get us, you know, give you an update of the impact of COVID to the district. Uh, I'm going to start specifically with child outreach, um, on the IEP 504 meeting plan or, uh, meetings, delivery of services. Uh, you've heard some new terms such as learning loss, uh, regression, and some of the challenges that we've had in the district. So I'm going to take us back to the March 13th, 10 months ago, when this happened. And kind of what we were up against, you know, going back, it's, it's amazing how much we forget in a short time that, you know, on March 13th, we were given one week to plan and and stuff that's very normal to us now 10 months later. You know, looking back is stuff that was very new to us then and and stuff that we hadn't done before. So in that time, the, the, you know, what we had to figure out was, you know, how do we communicate? Uh, you know, we, we weren't using Google Meets, we weren't using Zoom, we weren't, uh, using the Microsoft, uh, Meets. So, so that was all due to us. Um, we didn't know how we were going to get materials home again, right after that March 13th. If you went into a classroom, there, there was teachers who literally said, hey, leave your, leave everything, put everything down, leave your Chromebooks here. Uh, you know, this, uh, there's going to be some communication coming out tonight. Uh, and classrooms were literally left as if kids were going to be walking in the doors the next day. So we had a lot of materials, again, kids without Chromebooks, without chargers, uh, just kind of stuff left where where it lied that day before. Um, and then the other thing was worrying, we never made a move like this, is is there a system we can set up really quickly, uh, to make sure that we're not forgetting anybody or losing anybody? And remember, you know, school departments are very fluid. There is always new kids coming in, new kids going out, kids moving in between schools. We have foster children. We have, um, children who are in private placements. So, you know, there's a whole lot that you're thinking, geez, the, the normal checks and balances are gone. We have to set up something that won't let anybody, anybody, uh, get slipped through there. Another thing was meeting time, legal timelines. Uh, you know, we were all worried and we, we really thought there was going to be something coming out that from the federal government or from the local government, from Rhode Island, from Ride, uh, giving us some flexibility, you know, and and that first week, I really thought like, oh, we're going to get some, some, you know, email saying, hey, if you're in the, in the middle of an evaluation that has a 60-day timeline, or if you're, or, you know, meeting for a yearly IEP, um, or going to institute a new service, you know, which might have a 10-day timeline, that there'd be some forgiveness. Um, but we're thinking, if, if we didn't get that, how are we going to meet that? Uh, you know, how are we going to hold these meetings? Again, like I said a minute ago, everything was so new to us. You know, we, we hadn't had online meetings yet. We were used to scheduling our meetings, seeing if a parent would show up or see if a teacher came to school, um, and then kind of just relying on that. And the other thing is, is obligation of of the district, um, and to, you know, as all legal things, we need to collect signatures. How are we going to do that when we're all sitting in our bedrooms and basements and living rooms, uh, when we did, when we have these meetings? So, you know, we, we, Fred and I and Denise really took the task, um, of, you know, nothing's come out yet from Ride, nothing's coming out yet from the federal government in that first 24, 48 hours. Let's just pretend like we're, everything is as it is and we're going to go and meet all the IEPs, meet all the evaluations, timelines, we're going to meet all the timelines. Uh, I want to say we're, we're really one of the few districts that that made that decision. Uh, you know, we meet with the special ed directors around the state and often we, we would hear directors saying like, hey, we're telling everybody to hold off. We did the opposite. We put out the word and said, let's, let's keep on going forward. Uh, let's not skip a beat because if we get behind, it's only going to compound as time goes by. And remember, thinking back to that time, we were really think, we were taking everything on like almost two-week intervals, avoiding to get an update from the governor. Um, and we were nervous about two weeks. You know, if somebody would have told me then that guaranteed we wouldn't be back until summertime or, uh, in, in August, I would have definitely said, hey, we got to keep moving full steam ahead. But we were one of the few, few districts that did that. Again, as I said, to, to holding meetings, we, we found new way and creative ways to do it. Probably ways that will be difficult to, to go back to the old ones, we're always having in the person. Because we really, you know, we found out we weren't rescheduling meetings, parents were able to do it, whether they were at work or they were at home. They could jump in their cars during lunch breaks and attend meetings. Um, and, you know, a lot of times we, there's a lot of meetings for a lot of our, our kiddos. Um, and it's, it's a lot on the parents, especially if they have multiple kids. So we really found this has been great and, you know, we could get everybody. We could get teachers in on the meetings. We could get, uh, doctors in on the meetings. We could get their therapists in on the meetings. People who normally typically didn't, I, uh, attend IP meetings. We were having a great turnout. Signatures, uh, special thanks to Jim Murphy. Jim helped us out right away getting DocuSign. Uh, so Sarah Mangielli was a piece of that as well. Um, so right away, we found a, a way to meet, you know, getting those and collecting those signatures. Uh, Sarah Smith, who was Sarah Koppelman, you know, kind of took it over, uh, and Tammy, um, as far as helping all the teachers kind of collect those, those signatures. Um, and then the other thing, providing services, you know, there was so much to figure out. What did the services look like in distance learning? You know, we, we knew it was going to be different and then really that's where I said, there's really 750 stories. It's not just one story. You know, it looked different for every student, a piece of this, a piece of that. Um, you know, special thanks to all the teams to really kind of staying, you know, we always call it individualized education plan, but truly, uh, in this case, it really was because you really had, really had to look at everything and look at the students, see what they were capable of. Not just a student. What we were finding out was we were actually servicing now the whole family because we had to see what the family was capable of. Um, and so what the distance learning looked like for that family, remember, some families have one child with a certain need. Some families have five children with all different needs. Um, so it was really, you know, we really had to kind of drill down how, how to educate the, the students. The other thing was, you know, if you told me a week before, uh, you know, March 13th, that we were going distance and, and kids were going to have to log in, you know, maybe possibly from their PJs, you know, with their PlayStation four feet away from them and a TV three feet away from them. Would, would they even log on and participate in class and stay connected with their teacher? I would have said no. I would have been like, no kid's ever going to do that. And, and you really realize how important our teachers and service designers are to our students and families because they were logging on. You know, we had very few cases of, uh, children that we couldn't get to log on and we actually still do have very few cases. And we really kind of harp on those cases and try to find out any way to get them on because there are so few of them. Uh, students really participated and really, I think, look forward to, to having that little bit of normalcy and seeing that familiar face. Um, and then the other piece was, you know, we, we all were home and how are we going to provide services without double booking? You know, is the English teacher going to, uh, schedule a class at the time the special educator would want to do some, some work with them or that the speech and language would, would want to do some work with them? You know, we don't want to, um, pull them away from one thing and have them miss something. So I'm going to start from the beginning. Lisa Neal.
Mr. Wilson.
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before you start the next slide, I was wondering if you would allow us to, um, move back to the other agenda item that we had put off, which was the election of officers, um, because, um, our, our attorney may, may not make it through the whole meeting. So I hate to do this to you, but it is. All right. Thank you so much. Um, so, Mr. Anderson, um, if you could stop sharing your screen, um, Mr. Wilson, that would be great so that we can see everyone.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that now.
Okay, thank you. Great. I again, I really sincerely apologize. Um, Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to, um, start the agenda item which we put off, which was number four, election of officers.
I apologize for the inconvenience, but I am actually in three different school committee meetings tonight. Um, ladies and gentlemen, it's, uh, my name's John Anderson. I'm the attorney for the Coventry Public Schools. It's my pleasure every two years to conduct as an organization, and I'm actually handling the election of a chair for the, uh, next two years for the Coventry School Committee. So at this time, I will entertain nominations from the five members of the school committee. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Muted, Dave.
Mr. Murray.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Patnood.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Coloney. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I would ask the clerk to call, to, uh, conduct a roll call vote and ask each member of the school committee to indicate by name their choice of chairperson.
Thank you. Kathy Patnood.
Um, Kathy Patnood.
Dave Florio.
Kathy Patnood.
Is Luke Murray here? I don't see him.
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
Oh, you are. Oh, sorry, Luke, I'm looking right at you. Luke, Kathy, okay. Uh, Donna Coloney.
Kathy Patnood.
James Pearson.
Catherine Patnood.
Thank you. The, ladies and gentlemen, there are five votes for Catherine Patnood. I declare Kathy Patnood the Chair of the School Committee and I turn the chair over to Kathy Patnood for the purpose of electing a vice chair.
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and thank you to the rest of the, the remaining members of the committee. Um, I appreciate your support and, um, I'm honored to serve as your chair. Um, that being said, I would like to, um, start the process for nominations of the vice chairman. Uh, there, our chairperson, sorry. Um, are there any motions? Uh, would someone like to nominate, um, someone in the role of vice chairperson?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Dave Florio for vice chair.
Um, we have one nomination for David Florio. Are there any other nominations, um, that are on?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Lucas Murray for the position of vice chairman.
Thank you. Um, are there any other nominations for the vice chairperson? Hearing none, um, could, um, Mrs. McDonald, please ask each member who their choice for vice chairperson by name is?
Kathy Patnood.
Uh, David Florio.
Dave Florio.
Dave Florio.
Luke Murray.
Dave Florio.
Donna Coloney.
David Florio.
James Pearson.
Lucas Murray.
Thank you. Um, David Florio, um, is, has won the chair, uh, vice chairperson's, um, nomination and vote. So welcome, Mr. Florio, as our new vice chairperson. Would you like to say anything before we move on?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm sorry I didn't nominate you because my mic was, my mic was, uh, blocked or whatever, it was Xed out. But I fixed it and, uh, I'm learning. I'm learning the Zoom, the Zoom meetings and it's really fascinating. Uh, because I use Zoom meetings as a substitute in, uh, at another district. And, uh, I have to say, I am so proud to be working with you, Madam Chair. You know, I've known you a long time. I'm not going to say how long, but since the beginning. And you have done nothing but do a great job for the town of Coventry. And, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to work with you and thank you to the other members of the committee for our voting. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Um, are there any other comments from any of the members of the committee? Um, seeing none, hearing none. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, for your role in this. Really appreciate, um, the legal perspective, obviously, and, um, you can scoot off to your other meeting. We won't, we won't be angry. So we'll see you later. And, um, Mr. You're welcome. Um, Mr. Wilson, you're back on. Thank you so much for.
Thank you so much for helping us.
Well, man.
Thanks, Brad. All right, so I'm going to start us off, um, with the child outreach again. Lisa Neal helped to help us with this slide. She's our child outreach coordinator. Um, I'm just going to go down really quick. So Ride provided child outreach programs statewide with alternative virtual screen process consisting of non-reference tools. These checklists and questionnaires that rely on the parents, uh, reporting. So then child's, uh, families were encouraged to participate by completing an online screen sent by email or, uh, by completing paper copies of the screen sent through the, uh, the postal service. Families of children whose initial virtual screens suggest a re-screen are encouraged to bring their children in for an in-person re-screen. Uh, some of the families that contacted Central Office due to concerns or referrals from the pediatrician educators or childcare providers, um, Central Office has contacted early child programs like State Pre-K, Head Start, and Childcare Centers, preschool programs initiate all those screenings. All the child, early childhood programs, with the exception of one town, uh, are not allowing screeners to meet with the children in person. And, uh, some good information here, as of, uh, you know, the November 23rd, there was 144 screenings initiated, 60 completed screenings, 12 re-screens. They had out of that five referrals to special education and 40 screens initiated but not completed by parents and guardians, and they're still waiting for 44 initiated that are due. So that early intervention transitions to preschool, since March 13th, 2020, all early intervention referrals that were received within the timelines were completed by the child's third birthday. There have been 28 early intervention referrals processed from March 13th until today. Service were, services were either initiated on time, uh, either virtually or in person, based on the current phase that the district was in. The 30-month home visits continued in a virtual format. All transition meetings from early intervention to pre-K have occurred in a virtual format. And new evaluations were completed through interview, video clips, virtual observations, uh, from March to September. Uh, since September, we now include an in-person testing component. So you can see even like at the, the preschool, early childhood, uh, level that they were really able to adapt and just bring in technology and probably will help us in the future as well as we get out of this. So, uh, Denise was on this call and can help me answering questions, but she put this together as well, using federal grant money. A new comprehensive preschool curriculum called Creative Curriculum was purchased over the summer and teachers are trained in September. They opted to also purchase an additional cloud component which builds inconsistency, allows for across all the learning environments, whether it's hybrid, traditional, or remote. Uh, currently, they have 16 preschool, uh, 16 half-day students participating in parental choice learning. The dual-certified early childhood educator is using a CSO platform, which is also new to us, along with a creative curriculum to provide early. along with a creative curriculum to provide early childhood education. To date, since October, there has been 465 posts in the CSO distance learning classrooms. The average interactions last week was 16.6 per student. So this is a really good number. I know Denise might speak to it a little bit later, but she's really encouraged by this and how well this is going for those children who are at home. So, you know, again, like this ever evolving, when we had put this out, initially, this was, you know, schedules for students with IEPs currently. I think since a week ago, this has changed two or three times. But so we wanted to keep this because this for the majority of the school year from from October until very recently, this is what it looked like. So to give you a good idea of who's where and and how much. So when you're looking at the first one, the preschool, they've been in four days a week. Again, nobody on Mondays. So that they've been coming in right along, except for that one day. Elementary is pretty much the same thing, four days a week in person, Monday is that distance learning day. Unless the parent chooses that that five days a week in the distance learning format, again, that's a parental choice. At Feinstein, we've had roughly 99 students with IEPs coming in four days a week. About, you know, three students with IEPs coming in two days a week, and we have about 52 students with IEPs whose families chose to keep them in distance learning. Coventry High School, about 95 students coming in four days a week. 103 coming in two days a week, and I think right before closing, I actually had a pretty good significant shift in it that there's actually more coming in four days a week now. And distance learning, roughly 17 students with IEPs taking advantage of that. And then our Transition Academy, which if that's our 18 to 22-year-olds, it's currently based out of the high school. But, you know, is kind of a little school unto itself. So they are in person, four days a week, and they're out in the community doing job exploration and working on their daily level school, living schools every Wednesday. I just put a little asterisk in there that, you know, in-person services have been extended to other non-IEP special populations as well. So there's also outside of these numbers, there's also some students coming in four days a week or two days a week. Depending on whether they're high risk, if they're English language learners, if they're disenfranchised. Five oh four plans in some speed in some areas that career in tech. Or, you know, most recently, students of at risk of failing a couple of weeks ago. The high school looked at that and brought back another students of four days a week. So when we look at these, these, these days and that, what the reason why we tried to do the four days a week for students with IEPs as much as possible is because, again, with their special educator being being in, it really gave us the opportunity to kind of front load. So what I mean by that is we knew there was a good chance that that something like right what's happening right now with this pause was going to happen. You know, I I think we had a good idea this summer that something like this was going to happen. So when thinking about how are we going to service our students, you know, Denise and Fred and I really wanted to try to try to put in as much service as possible. When the students were able to actually come in person. So that way we could kind of get ahead of the curve and and kind of preload services. So that way, for some reason, if we go out, we kind of already gave them above what the IEP called for. So if the IEP called for a half hour a week of one working on like a math goal, we might be doing, again, a half hour of those four days. So really kind of front loading that as much as possible. We put in this slide so you have an idea of what we're talking about, about how many students are in school compared to those are out of school by parental choice. And you can read those numbers for yourself, but basically across all the schools is somewhere in between the 70 and the high 80% of students coming in. You can see that the numbers aren't far off from each other from the total to the IEP. But that just gives you a good idea. So again, we're looking at the IEP and 504 that, you know, we've used the meetings are Zoom or Google Meet. We're using DocuSign to get those, any evaluation signed or IEPs that we need to sign. A big part was, I mentioned before, that 60-day evaluation when students are either getting reevaluated or initially evaluated for services, whether it be IEP or 504. You know, we had a couple of issues with that. One, that a lot of the evaluations that we use are were they're not normed or standardized for online administration. So things, you know, that that was difficult. We had to find a way to tackle that. So we could do some of those online, but we'd have to take that into consideration when we reviewed the evaluation. So some of the solutions for that again was using a reevaluation summary, using non-standardized administration interpretation. In some cases, if we really need a specific certain, you know, looking for specific information, we ask the parent to postpone with permission. So we would, we would do all the evaluations for everything that we could. And then if we were looking at one area, we might say, hey, you know, it doesn't make sense to test in that area right now. Let's come back to the table once we're in person. And then, you know, obviously, since late August, we've been in person. You know, testing in person or at Central Office. You know, again, looking at the distance learning services, how we could do that. You know, virtually, you know, first in person. And then the social emotional students and families, you know, we were doing daily calls from TAs or from the teachers. This even includes our out-of-district students. And kind of like I said, you know, before we took a little break there, is we really found ourselves servicing the entire family, you know, and I heard this from everybody, from the teachers, from the related service providers, you know, even from myself. I've never really felt so close to many families because, you know, one minute you're popping into their living room and you're you're seeing the whole family. And really, you're trying to find a way to meet everybody's needs. And even when we were doing those following up and we didn't want to follow, let kids slip through the cracks. We were following up, not just with the student, we were following up with the whole family. We were asking about, you know, IT issues. We were asking about food issues. We were asking about, you know, just psychologically, how how people in the family are doing and, you know, if there's anyone we could redirect them to. So we were trying to really, you know, if we were going to reach out to these families during that time, we were really going to reach out and try to to help them in any way we could, we could. And in a lot of cases, I think we did help a lot of families and kind of got them services outside of the IP and 504 and and really helped out. And, you know, again, from everything from food, technology to just basic needs. A couple of things, you know, when we look at IEPs and especially, you know, we did have an uptick of referrals during this time. The one thing that we have to look at in the eligibility process is, you know, disability and the educational impact and does it require services? So what we've been kind of operating on is, is, you know, is the LEA responsible? We, I mean, I'm sorry, we are responsible for a pre-appropriate education or what, you know, we refer to as FAP. And there was a case recently out of out of Colorado, which really kind of defined that is, you know, it's appropriate and not ideal. You'll see in a minute, like, under the executive order and the the COVIDs that we're under right now, not ideal would be the the main term there. So in 2017, the Supreme Court, you know, found that it requires an educational program reasonably calculated to make progress appropriate in the light of the child's circumstances. So again, when we're, when we say, you know, we're offering faith to families or faith to a child. You know, we are taking into consideration the child's circumstances, and these are very unique circumstances. And what you're going to hear out of those circumstances, excuse me, is compensatory services due to the distance learning or learning loss. You know, these are, these are newer terms that are going to have popped up since March 13th. So learning loss, when we talk about learning loss or regression, what we're, what we're referring to is any specific or general loss of knowledge and skills or to the reversals in academic progress, most commonly due to extended gaps or discontinuities in a student's education. Which is different than compensatory service because you've heard, you might have heard compensatory services being and kind of thrown around a lot and jargon, whether it be RIDE or the governor or just out in the public. So compensatory services really refers to the failure of the school district to provide appropriate services. That would be including corrective actions and action appropriate to address the needs of the child. So when we talk about compensatory services, it's really like, like Coventry itself failed to provide something. Not that, you know, we were, again, we're under these unique circumstances under the executive order. So, you know, we've, we've had some issues with that and those and those terms kind of being thrown around. The one thing we want to make clear is that some of the language being used at RIDE and across all schools, which is becoming very common now, is that COVID compensatory services. That does not equal compensatory services, not not in the legal definition. And RIDE was supposed to issue guidance on that probably in August. And, and, you know, the directors of special education around the state, I'm actually on the executive committee for ARISE, which, you know, again, is the Rhode Island Association for Special Educators or Special Education Directors. And so I've actually had the privilege of meeting with RIDE almost every week. Probably four or five out of four or five directors who have been doing that consistently since March 13th. We've been waiting for this guidance. It has not come out. So they were supposed to help us kind of define what would be that, what what is considered that learning loss, how, what is considered COVID compensatory services, you know, how should districts go about trying to make those services up, or if they need to make those services up, or what that may look like, and nothing has come out yet. But we do know when we look at true compensatory services and even can what we'll have to do is compare the learning loss and regression of an IEP student versus a non-IEP student, if that makes sense. So, you know, if if we fail to do something as a district, how we figure that out is we, again, we compare that learning loss or regression compared to a, like, say, third grade student with an IP to a third grade student who does not have an IP.
Madam Chairman, I asked Brad a question?
Sure.
Brad, with children who have speech impediments.
Yep.
Stuttering. Which I had as a child.
Yep.
In Providence. It was really tough to to get a diagnosis in 1964.
I bet.
So, so, but my, my question is more far ranging with with children in our community that need speech pathologists. And and kids to regress who are not stuttering.
Yep.
On March 13th, but are really stuttering now. Is that being addressed, Brad, or can it be addressed?
So Davey, it has, so interesting things. Stuttering actually isn't a very common disability in in our district or a lot of districts right now. You know, so, but I'll say overall between, you know, any kind of speech and language, we have a number of of speech and or children who receive speech and language services. And again, it's different in every case. But the what I would like to say is what the feedback I've gotten overwhelmingly from our speech and language pathologists is is that that they really have, the families have appreciated some of the services happening online. Like I said, some things that we're doing right now, I don't see them changing. Like, I see that there might be a time in the future where speech and languages, well, we might be writing into IEPs saying, you know, one of the services might have to happen with the parent where they can log in with the child at home. Because what we were finding was that there was actually quite a lot of improvement in some children with speech disabilities. Because the family, the parents were sitting there with the speech and language pathologist online. They've never gotten that snapshot of what those services look like in person before. Now they were. Now they were actually sitting down with their child next to them and seeing what what the child was working on, seeing what the teacher was, how they were instructing them and how they were, you know, what kind of cues they were giving that child to overcome the disability or to work with a disability. And then the parents then were using that all day long. So it wasn't, you know, half an hour speech. What a half an hour speech was turning into was a half an hour speech for the child, a half an hour of educating the parent of how to work with their own child. And then those services were actually getting carried out for the entire day. So again, it's case by case. Everybody's story is a little bit different. But I'll tell you what, I've I've heard way more positives from the speech community, and especially the speech community, I think, compared to all related services about really success cases. Does that answer your question, Dave?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brad.
Now, it's really been, it's been kind of fascinating, you know, things that we thought were going to happen and how how kids were going to react and parents were going to react. You know, some, some of the stuff I would never would have guessed. You know, now we probably have 50 quasi-special ed, you know, speech therapists out there in Coventry right now, where we never had that before. Just the, so addressing 504s, I know, you know, people wanted us to bring up 504s tonight. 504 is very interesting because, you know, it's, again, we look to address the substantial impact of a suspected disability on a daily living. But it's very environmental specific. So again, if you have a 504 and you go to Feinstein Middle School, as soon as you go up to the high school, we have to relook at that 504 because you're now in a new environment. It looks very different. You know, there's, there's stairs at the, at the high school where there isn't stairs at the middle school. So a child with a 504 might need not need any services to get upstairs at the middle school, but when they go into the high school, they'll have to write something into that plan. So when we, when we, when the children were at home and we look at 504s, you know, even taking something as simple as like a medical 504 round of peanut allergy. Well, you're at home, you know, it's going to look very different. But so just like the IEPs, again, you know, we have not just one story of how we handle this, but many stories. The 504 teams really had to look at each, each one and kind of review any additional info because of the distance learning piece and seeing if there's, there may be a combination they needed to put in that 504 plan because it is in a new environment. It's your home environment. So we had to look at those, you know, all pretty much individually. And again, some children didn't, didn't, might actually not need a 504 when they're at home. And, and, you know, others with 504s, it might look very different. So some of our larger challenges, and again, I really want to emphasize this, the largest challenges, because there's been so many challenges. But some of our larger challenges are, you know, again, the positivity cases with with COVID, especially in our specialized programs. So even as, you know, I speak, three hours ago, I got updated, you know, everybody knows some of the the programs that we brought back, such as at the high school. Our life skills, you know, we've already had cases. And that looks very differently than it did three hours ago. You know, we talked about our staffing shortages. You've heard plenty about that because staff were either, you know, sick themselves or in isolation or quarantine. And again, we had staffing shortages before COVID even happened. You know, there's been fewer staff available to provide in-person and distance learning services. One of our biggest struggles is when when we went to distance learning was, you know, actually, not when we went to this, when we went to this learning was fine because everybody moved that direction. But coming back in September where we gave parental choice, we were basically adding an additional class to every grade level. So if you had a seventh grade at Feinstein, you now had, you know, the the seventh grade teams, and then we actually almost kind of added one additional team, a distance learning team. Which, which really kind of stretched our staff thin because, you know, we weren't getting extra teachers out of this. We were just asked to do more with less. And then, you know, just staffing personal situations, I, you know, we're, everybody probably on this call, even myself included. We all have our own personal situations. I have two kids at home who are getting, you know, I've elected to keep them home to receive distance learning. So I'm dealing with that as I'm at work. You know, staff with, with, you know, living with parents, with with kids. And it's just really been difficult. Staff having to service students from many classrooms for a stable pause, you know, RIDE initially said, you know, really keep pods stable. Well, I can't give a speech and language a pathologist to every pod. I can't give a physical therapist to every pod. You know, we only have two physical therapists in the district. So we knew people were going to be going in and out and how we could do that to to keep, you know, the staff members safe. that the children safe, uh, and, and that really kind of was difficult to set up schedules that would do that. Educating in the least restrictive environment, which we are tasked to do. So what that may mean is we have, might have a student and a child in a life skills room who's receiving part of their services, might be going to, uh, you know, a class that they are able to participate in, whether a culinary class or an English class or, uh, phys ed. It, it's been, it's been difficult to try to say like, hey, we want to keep in a stable pod, you know, but how are we going to keep in a least restrictive environment where you still have access to all those other classes? Providing services on the two platforms, like I said, the in-person and distance, uh, learning, it's just, you know, divided us. Phase changes and last minute recommendations from the governor. So it's funny, I think about how many of these I'm reading now, when, when I wrote this a week ago, that I've had to deal with again in the last 48 hours. You're all familiar with the calendar that was, was kind of pushed out, um, by RIDE, uh, looking at, looking at the January 7th date. Well, guess what? That, that doesn't stop special services from having, that, that doesn't, again, change my evaluation times. That doesn't change my, when an IEP meeting is going to happen time. That doesn't, uh, change that I need to get so many services in per week on each subject. So, you know, when, when they say, when they say that, it actually, there's certain things like certain areas of the school department can be very flexible. Special education can't, like, we are legally obligated to do that. And when they throw me a curve ball like that and, and change the calendar, really, it, it makes us have to do a lot of work in short amount, short amount of time to figure out how we're going to get through that. There really hasn't been much guidance coming out of RIDE comparison to the other New England states. Like I said, I, I am the president of ARISE, which is the director of special education educators in the state. So we are very apprised of what's coming out of RIDE. Uh, and we're apprised of what's going on from other New England states. And then a lot of, uh, New England states are offering flexibility to the LEAs, um, giving them guidance how to handle certain things, how to troubleshoot certain things. We have gotten, uh, there's nothing other than one document around FAP, which, uh, we actually was very questionable, a lot of the information that was in there. The transportation will always be an issue, again, a, a, a daily problem, you know, we, you know, we're, we moved to a distance learning format for this week, except for a couple, uh, personal cases and a couple, uh, programs such as the life skills and transition. So again, I'm working with Jason and, and, you know, I need one more student coming in and I have to reach out to Jason and, and get that changed up. The expectations versus reality, again, you know, the, the, every, you know, we're dealing with emotions, we're dealing with parents, we're dealing with teachers of what they want to do. So we all have those high expectations. But the reality of what we are stuck in is just, it's very, it's very difficult. Securing PPE, again, going back to the summer, we're waiting for the state saying, hold off, don't order it. And I was kind of sneakily ordering it, which turned out to be a very good thing because they didn't give us very much, uh, and cleaning supplies. And then all the, you know, I don't have to, I'm preaching to the choir about financial restrictions. And then just examples of steps taken. So staff choice, flexibility. You know, the, the, the unions really gone above and beyond. We're increasing part-time staff, pay for giving up prep locks or services outside of school hours. Staffing agencies, uh, we created a district-wide COVID nurse, which ended up being a wonderful thing. Um, and, you know, our weekly meetings, frequent meetings with special, uh, education directors from around the state and meeting with, uh, the, the state itself. So our successes, special education has been an integral part of all reopening scenarios. There are, there are K to five programs and, uh, service in person or DL. Parent choice since day one in the school year. Our, at the middle school and high school, our special education instruction exceeds the regular education schedule. We're given more in-person options offered earlier than more of the, most other communities out there. When you compare us to, you know, Warwick or Westwork, we're doing additional support options since the summer. And again, we're really being creative in individual cases. We've done some things, I think, that the other districts are not even considering. I'm actually going to hand it off to one second so I can take a water break here and, and Don's going to jump and go over, uh, the student's fall score. Are you ready, Don?
Just advance the slide.
Oh, I'm there right now.
Oh, there it is. So this is kind of a busy slide, so I want to kind of summarize a little bit of what, uh, Mr. Wilson said to kind of get you to this point. One of the things he talked about a few slides back was learning loss. And back in the spring, when we switched over to distance, distance learning, it evolved quite a bit from March till June. A good example is in the beginning, uh, elementary was doing packets. And two weeks into that, we were handing out Chromebooks and then trying to train kids how to use Chromebooks and using all of the Google Suite options. And in plus, um, as the, as the rest of the spring progressed, giving them some supplementary supports. And so that was the spring. By June, we were looking at reentry plans and Department of Ed had given us the reentry plans. And a big part of the reentry plan was to address learning loss, to look at where the gaps were. We expected gaps. There's not one person in this state, not one person probably in this country, who didn't expect gaps in the spring because it looked so significantly different than anything kids, uh, had experienced before. Not to say that not, some, some kids were successful in distance learning. Many kids were successful in distance learning. But I think overall, we knew there was going to be gaps. So, um, Erin Coin, who, uh, works closely with, uh, my department, but also works closely with the special ed department, runs a lot of our data. And in the spr- in the, in the spring, we did not give STAR. But we did give STAR in the fall. And it was the first time we had given kids STAR since, uh, January of 2020. And in that time, a lot, a lot had, uh, taken place. And so we gave our kids the STAR assessment. And for some of the kids, when we gave it to them this, this past fall, they'd only been in school for one or two weeks. And some kids actually took the STAR assessment in a distance learning environment, meaning they took the test at home, not in school, which is different than anything we'd ever done before. When we got the test results, uh, we were disappointed but not shocked that scores had gone down. It, it was, it was expected. And we actually had already started planning for that. We started looking at the curriculum. We looked at what we call the power standards. So we can try to address standards that are most crucial, crucial in each grade level and each content area. We were looking backwards and forwards at the same time, meaning looking at the standards and skills from the previous grade, but then also looking at the ones for the grade level that the kids are currently in to try to get kids ramped up. So what you're looking at here is a, a comparison. What I did is I looked at STAR scores, one fall against another fall, uh, in, in math and, and in, in reading. And the way I did it is I had fall of 17, fall of 18, fall of 19, and fall of 20 for each grade level, K to 10. Those are the kids that we test in STAR. And what I did is I took fall of 17, 18, and 19 and averaged them together and came up with a score. And then I compared the 20 score to that average. And this was just a way for me to show how different, uh, the kids did this year versus a prior, a prior three-year average. So in the first graphic, the graphic on the top is just the, the, the actual raw numbers that I used to calculate everything. I just wanted, uh, a visual representation so everybody in the audience can see where, where it all came from. If you look at the column to the, the two columns to the right, in, in reading, for example, a three-year average score in kindergarten is, 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 uh, 63% of our kids who are proficient. 63% of our kids are proficient. This year was 64. So no significant impact in kindergarten, but there probably wouldn't be because those kids were in preschool last year. And so it wouldn't necessarily have as big as an impact. If you look at each grade going up, there's a one, two, three-point, uh, most of the time deficit when you compare the three-year average to this year's. So in first grade, it was 76 in reading, this year it's 73. Second grade, 68, this year 68. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are significant. And you're looking at fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, which are last year's fourth, fifth, and sixth. And in reading, those kids, um, did not score well as compared to the three-year average from the previous years, which is, which is very disappointing and, and a, and a big hurdle to clear. And, 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 and in those three years leading up to this year, we've been either steady or making, you know, fairly decent increases and improvements. So that becomes a focus area for us. I'm not going to come up with a billion excuses for why those numbers are those numbers. I will say though, there is a switch that happens in reading right around third or fourth grade, where kids are not learning how to read anymore, but they're reading to learn, which means they have to read and apply. And it's difficult to teach some of those concepts when you're in a distance learning environment and platforms that the kids weren't used to. Heading back down the bottom of the reading column, you'll see ninth grade and 10th grade actually did better than the three-year average. I contribute that to the fact that those older kids have been in the Google environment the longest. They've used devices, they've used Google Classroom, they've been the most involved there. But also their scores were a little bit lower, so there's lots of room for improvement there because of, uh, how they performed in the past. Next column over is math. It's the same kind of breakdown where I took the three-year average compared to this year's score. The math scores took a significant hit over reading. They're, they are not as good. It's, it's difficult to teach mathematics in a distance learning environment, even with IXL and some of the platforms we use to help kids practice. I almost cringe to think about how the scores would look if we didn't invest in some of those, um, those programs. So so the whole point of me isolating these scores and taking the three-year average and comparing it to what they look like this year is, and, and, and why am I involved in the special education presentation is I wanted to provide everybody some context that, you know, it wasn't just a special ed group of kids or kids with 504s who were struggling. All our kids were struggling in some way, shape, or form. Many of our kids had some learning loss during the springtime heading into the fall. We've identified the grade levels. We've shared all the data with all the principals who in turn shared them with their teachers. We've begun to put lots of things in place to help address this. When our kids take the test again in, in May, excuse me, in the winter, which will be, uh, January to February, we'll be looking for some improvements. We'll be looking for, uh, places where things can be better and continue to use, do the work. But in, 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 in some ways, and this will be the last thing I'll say, is this year is, is a challenging year because we almost need more than a year's growth in a year's amount of time. Meaning our kids have to move more than a year in their, in their ability to do work in, 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 in a time limit of one year, which is beyond what is typically expected of kids. Usually what we expect from our students is a year's growth in a year's amount of time. That's average. That's what we expect. To make up for some of these gaps is going to take more than that. And that's a challenge, not for just special ed or kids who have, uh, you know, learning disabilities or 504 plans, but for all our kids. And so when, when they get into the rest of their presentation, I just wanted to put this there as some context of, of what we, uh, looked at as a district. Uh, it's, it's disappointing, but not surprising.
Thanks, Don. So we're, we're getting towards the end. So again, successes as far as that STAR proficient, uh, the fall verse 20, uh, verse 20, I'm sorry, fall verse 19. There really has been less regression among special ed students compared to their peers. I'm going to show you in a minute, in reading, seven out of 11 grades, there was less regression, even improved proficiency rates compared to the non-special education peers. In math, uh, seven out of 10 grades, there was less regression or even improved proficiency rate compared to the non-special ed students. And then the only reason it's seven out of 10 there is just because one of them, they were, were dead even. So if you look at the breakdown here, again, if we take any, uh, any grade, if we look at reading in grade, uh, two, you can see that the, the general ed, uh, had a 14% decrease where a special ed actually had a 42% increase. So anything with a green in special ed is, is, a green number is actually an increase. If it's a green block, they actually did better, like in grade one, even though it's, it's a red number, it's in the green block, they did better than the, uh, general ed. So there was less regression there. So again, when you look at those numbers, they really kind of speak for themselves. So I mean, kudos to the, the special ed staff, uh, in Coventry for doing such a fabulous job. You know, when you look at seven out of 11 grades actually, you know, making more progress percentage-wise than, than the same, um, general ed peers. That's, that's really fantastic. So again, here's our final thoughts on tonight is, you know, we really stress, try to stress the community that there is, you know, what we want to offer and what we require offer. You know, legally, I, you know, I think really kind of is, is the base of what we require offer. We really try to go above and beyond and, and get creative with each individual case, um, and, and really do what we can for, for each student in Coventry. Parents have come to me, you know, daily, sometimes weekly, um, and really asked, you know, we try to, to do all our means and start them off with, what can we do? Let's not talk about what we can't do. You know, we try to, we, like I said, we've been trying to up those services, get them started sooner, like kind of preload and, and get as many in as we can. So when we hit bumps in the road, we're good to go. You know, I've been still working with RIDE, uh, you know, on a weekly basis. And again, it's just finding that, that balance of safety and normalcy, which is, it's, it's been an everyday struggle. You know, even looking to see who to bring in during this pause because we want to be safe, but for, you know, we know for some kids, we, we want that normalcy piece. And again, we're, we're being individualized for each student. And again, it's, you know, this is where, where we're at.
Um, thank you so much, um, for this presentation.
It's, sorry if that took a while. Very passionate about it. Uh, and then again, I can't, I gotta thank Denise and Fred, and Lisa, and really my coordinators, Don, Shelley, Martha, for helping me out with this. And really the whole Coventry special ed staff, ULS staff. It's, it's, they've done a great job.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Um, it was very interesting, um, data, that's for sure. Um, I'm just going to go, go a quick roll, um, run around from the committee members before we bring it out to the public. Mr. Florio, did you want to?
Davey, I'm mute, I'm mute.
I don't want to interrupt, I don't want to interrupt you. You did a great job, Brad, as did your staff. And you're right. This was, this was a global pandemic and you had no choice. You had to respond. And it comes from the top down. You, you did a great job. But I think Mr. Levis's, uh, inspiration helped you as well. And, uh, you're a great, you're a great special ed director. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome, Brad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Uh, Mr. Murray, any questions, comments?
Now, Brad, uh, nice presentation. It gave a good overview of what you've been dealing with. That's always, it's always good to see the operational side of things. Um, I'm, I'm really glad to see you're adapting to the new, new world. You mentioned things like DocuSign and trying to, to use the Zoom platforms to, to really your advantage. And you said that's not going away, which is good. Because I think, uh, we can certainly use those tools going forward and to our advantage, just like every other industry is adapted. So that's great. Um, one question I did have in looking at the scores, which I, I applaud the efforts and the fact that the STAR test thing shows that we are moving in a positive direction with special education and, and maintaining. But there seem to be some regression in grade seven, eight on the reading. Pretty substantial. And I was just wondering, just anecdotally, you know, why you think that might be, um, on a couple of those?
It's, it even ties into like when Don's presentation, as far as like the, the stats, I mean, there's really, given the, the years that they're at, that, you know, we, we've been struggling with that, why? You know, if we, we knew the answers, hopefully we get those scores up. But just, you know, the, that the age that the students are at, um, we also look at kind of the, the services have changed uh, over time. We're doing things now with the younger kids that maybe that group didn't get. But it, and it, and it seems to be like that age. I, I, we, we haven't figured it out. But and it seems to be like that age, we haven't figured out why specifically like that grade. You know, we're looking at the teaching, we're looking at the teaching practices, the teachers themselves, you know, pretty much everything that we can do to shift that. But that does seem like it's a bump there and that's really going to be our task to figure that out.
And if I can jump in a little bit here, the other thing, Mr. Murray, that is a little bit difficult is that, you know, traditionally the trend has been pre-COVID, that kids trend up in reading all the way up through about fifth grade, they level off, and then we've been experiencing a dip in seven and eight and a slow rebound in nine, 10, 11. And it was one of the biggest reasons why we invested in curriculum at the middle school first and purchased new materials for them first. Because above and beyond what is happening in special education in terms of additional supports, the tier one instruction, the core instruction was that the teachers didn't have the materials and resources that they needed to kind of make a difference. And the ELA director at the middle school literally emailed me today, a long email with a bunch of questions. And her last statement to me was, I love our new curriculum. So I think we're going to see a difference. It takes time, there's no magic wand, but I think part of the problem with the middle school is they never really had really good core curriculum materials. And I think moving something there is going to have an impact on all our kids.
I appreciate the answer because I think it, you're right, these things take time to filter out. And the biggest thing I always dig at is the data showing us something. How are we responding to the data, right? Is the data just there to be a pretty picture on the graph or is it driving decisions? And it sounds like it is. And I know that you talked about the preschool curriculum that you've now hopped on to a new curriculum there. So those are positive changes that I think are important to highlight. And I'll be interested to see moving forward. And I'll keep this graph in mind moving forward in future presentations with the new curriculum implementation, so.
The other thing I need to mention too is our structured literacy initiative, which, you know, we started last year, which has some pretty significant results in a very short amount of time. Again, we started with a few sample students just to see how it would go. And then quickly spread within like six months' time to a first graders, fifth graders, all the way down to one of the youngest is saying right now. But we're really kind of push structured literacy and we've had results. And, you know, I would expect that as those kids get older into the sixth and seventh, hopefully we'll see that flatten out a little bit.
I'm going to fill in the gaps a little bit, so. Yeah, he's breaking up quite a bit. So structured literacy is literally like the science of reading, how we teach kids to read all the way down to the letter and sound level. Typically taught at the younger levels, grades K1 and 2 is when they get that basic phonics and phonemic awareness instruction, and then we start moving towards kids not just learning to read, but reading to learn. Traditionally at the middle school, grades six, seven and eight, you don't see a lot of structured literacy. At that point, kids are really working on comprehension and vocabulary and things that are higher order. But there's a whole population of kids that need more structured literacy than other kids. And so the initiative that the special ed department and regular ed are all working on together is teacher level, but also move it up into the middle. And you may even see it at the high school at some point. So where our kids are struggling with some of those basic literacy skills, we have pieces in place to support them. That just just started this year, but I know, and I'm not going to say more than I should, but I already know off the top of my head, three or four kids that I knew personally at the elementary level that struggled, that have responded very well to structured literacy at the middle school. So it's definitely had an impact.
And the one thing you said, Don, that really hits the nail on the head is the special ed and regular ed working together. This is one of the first really big initiatives where we've done that and it's having a good payout.
That's great. Well, I mean, it sounds like positive changes. I mean, the one thing I appreciate is Brad and Don, you both, when I ask you a question, you have an answer and it sounds like you're into the weeds on the project. So that's, that's positive in and of itself. So thanks for the great presentation, Brad, and thank you to your team for putting it together. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I just wanted to let you know, Brad, that was a wonderful presentation. I really, it really was enlightening, so to say. It was very in-depth and I really appreciate all the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Pearson.
Echo the sentiment, Wilson. Thank you to you and your team for putting this together. I probably sparked the, you know, you having to do this, but I think it's very important for the school committee to understand, you know, we've been so focused on, but we can't afford it. And some parents had raised some concern, so I asked for some more information. And this is probably more than I even asked for, so I greatly appreciate it. I have one specific question and then kind of a more broader question. A specific question related to IEP and 504 meetings. You're talking about the challenges you have doing these virtually. And I want to make sure we're taking care of our students that are also moving on. Are you having any challenges making sure that seniors with an IEP or a 504, that those 504s are aligned with psychological evaluations? So when, so those students who are preparing to move into a college or university setting, you know, for further their education, they're all set there because they need that material to be able to self-advocate to, if they need a 504 or an IEP kind of plan in a college setting.
I'll give you the kind, I want to give everybody a brief, just understanding of what that looks like before I answer the question. So when we look at the transition from high school to like a collegiate setting, again, like I said, 504s are very environmentally based. So again, a 504 high school will look very, or may look very different than at the college level. And actually, the way colleges do it are more like all the cart, which is sometimes easier. For again, at the high school level, a child might have to pick or demonstrate the need for an accommodation, you know, such as like notes taken for them. Where at college, they'll go to the help center and, you know, it'll be like, oh, do you want to take, you know, you want notes taken for you? Do you want to record in the lesson? Sure, sure. So it's a bit easier at that level. But like you're saying, for that documentation, they needed an evaluation. Also, I mean, we don't have IEPs in, at the collegiate level, only in the public school level. So what we do is, yes, we have to make sure that all the evaluations are happening. So they have to be what we call updated evaluations. So in the last, you know, three years, they needed updated evaluation. And we have not skipped a beat with those in all cases. We've been moving like, again, we really didn't want to skip a beat, but moving right along. We've been working with also, like, you know, for some of our students who are going with like Buddha or something like that, working with them and saying like, what do you need? What evaluations would you like us to do to make sure they have everything that they need? In some cases in the 504, the family might have to actually update something with like their family general practitioner. So it might be an evaluation that is not actually a school-based evaluation. It might just be something with their pediatrician that they need. But in those cases, we'd even kind of be steering in that direction. Hey, you know, when you get to college, you're going to need this documentation. So make sure you get it from your doctor now. Make sure, well, it might be like ADHD diagnosis. Like, hey, just have your doctor, you'll update that. So that way, when you go to that center that, you know, they, that's all updated and then they'll offer you those services.
Nope, terrific. Good to know you're on top of that and nothing is falling through the cracks. My second thing is, I love the speech pathologist anecdotal story that you gave. Thank you to Mr. Florio for bringing up that question. As a parent, I'm actually not surprised at all because understanding the tools that you need as a parent to help your child through something or to learn or to work through something is invaluable. I can't even, can't even express how invaluable it is in my experience. So hearing that, you know, we're having an extra benefit with distance learning because parents are learning the tools at the same time the child is and continuing to enforce those those behaviors, tools, you know, use those tools to help. Not surprising, but awesome to hear. So added benefit. And I think it's a lesson learned that engaging with parents is something that you probably do more than some other departments. And it's so important. That said, question, I've had parents read out to me with, not so much concerns, but understanding the distance learning, hybrid learning environment is a challenge, especially a challenge to their own children in offering, you know, offering, asking questions, but at the same time, offering their viewpoint of how things possibly could be done better if it is at all possible. So my next question is quite simply, how can parents, I think I know the answer to this already, so a lot of this is for the audience. How do parents best engage with you and your team to give and exchange feedback about how Coventry special ed programs are functioning and running and best serving students and families?
If they have a really big concern or like an overall, like just want to make a general observation, you know, anybody feel free to contact me. Again, WilsonBrad@CoventrySchools.net or you get my number online. But, you know, I talk to parents, I love hearing from them. You know, and like I said, like there's, even this week, there's been parents who came up with, you know, new concerns and, you know, we take them head on, we take them seriously. And again, like Mr. Levis started out with the meetings saying like, we really welcome any kind of feedback. I know when we get the new website going, that a little bit more easily access for the parents to get that to me. If it's a more specific, if it's in like a one area of the child's IP, again, I just, we say this all the time, it's like a broken record, but I'll say it one more time. Again, a parent has the right to call an IEP meeting at any time. And we have to, you know, oblige in 10 school days without a date. So again, if there ever is a concern, you know, you can start with your case manager or just simply send the principal or the case manager an email saying, I want an IEP meeting. And, you know, I know some parents will even request that myself, or Fred or Denise attend. And then he goes, if we can make that happen, we make that happen. Like I say, I don't ever remember turning down one. I may have a move it day or ask the parents, you know, do it on the 11th day or the 10th day if they want me to be there. But, you know, I definitely welcome that.
Sometimes, I think in the past, we used to, and maybe we still do, and I'm just unaware now. You know, there used to be meetings where parents would get together with educators and talk about the special ed program in Coventry. Is that still happening?
Yeah, so we still have the lack. It's kind of on hiatus because we're going, I think we're going to, if we hopefully come back in person, we're going to try to get them all in at the end of the year because a lot of them are about transition, about preschool registration. Those are really problematic discussions. They're not, we actually, by regulation, and they kind of stipulate, don't get into the weeds of your own child. And it's not a time to like air grievances on your own child's IP. It's like, you know, hey, Coventry should really look about getting more PD for children with, you know, for autism or, you know, we really need to look at having a better transition program at the high school. We might want to relocate that. So it's more of that problematic concerns that we talk about.
Okay, terrific. Thank you for your feedback. Thank you again for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And my final comments are again, to echo what many of the committee members have already said. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was very informative, very interesting. Some of the data is especially interesting to me. And, you know, to hear something positive and maybe some silver lining to the new formats that we can now use in these populations may be something that we can continue. And be interesting to look at data, you know, two falls from now to see how that compares. To see and try to tease out what it was about this particular pandemic time that helped kids do better in some ways than the general population. So it's really kind of interesting. And finally, the whole notion of the lack. In this district, there have been times when the local advisory committee has been extremely active and then not so active. And maybe the Zoom format would be something that could encourage more participation. Because it's tough for parents to actually leave their house to go to an LEC meeting, you know, in the evening at six o'clock, for example, but they might be able to Zoom it. And I think that's the other kind of silver lining about the pandemic, that Zoom is always available. And even for IEP meetings, there's some really, you know, potentially some good things that could come out of this with parent engagement. And so again, thank you so much for this presentation. And it's really good for the school committee and the public to hear this kind of information. I don't know if you had any final comments, Mr. Wilson?
I have to show off my video for final comment. But really, I mean, there'll be books written about this. And but overall, it really has brought us closer to families. And it has been a good thing. And education will never look the same after this. Again, I work with Don of saying like, you know, what's it going to look like next year when all this goes away? And the parents are still requesting certain things that we learned about during this time. And we know that's going to happen. And it's a good thing for education, it really is. Because we needed a kind of a kick and have us reevaluate the way we do things. So it'll be good. There will be a silver lining to this.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy, I think we have two hands up from the public.
Yes, there are two people that want to speak. I'll bring Pauline in first. Pauline, if you could state your full name and address for the record and unmute your microphone. Pauline? Okay, we will move on to Nicole. Nicole, if you could state your full name and address for the record and unmute your microphone. Nicole, are you there?
Hello, I'm here.
Could you state your full name and address for the record?
Nicole Elliott, 111 Bramble Bush Road.
Okay, you're free to speak.
I actually didn't even have a question. I'm not quite sure why it raised. I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
That's okay, Nicole. Thank you for attending.
No problem.
You can always raise your hand again at some other later in the meeting and add some comments.
The comments about the Zoom, my toddler might have done it.
It can happen. All right, thank you.
I think that's all.
Yeah, that looks like it. Okay, wonderful. All right, then we can move on to our next item, which is the Title IX policy, the first reading. It was our reference number four. I'd just like to state that it was very involved. I lost count of the pages as I was reading that particular policy. So my hat is off to the policy committee for putting this extremely well-written policy together. So before I take up too much more time, Mr. Levis or Mr. Pearson, did you want to make any comments about this particular policy? I know it's for the first reading and we're going to probably dispense with it, but I don't know if you wanted to comment about it.
I'd just like to jump in. I hope you don't mind, Mr. Pearson. But first I want to thank Mr. Pearson and the Policy Subcommittee, Dr. Ian Dixon, Mr. Anderson and Sean Cluff. Both of our attorneys have supported us throughout the process. And we've had, I think it was our last meeting was 100 meetings we've had. So it's pretty significant. And, you know, we've had parents, community members, many teachers, administrators support the process. So I just want to say thank you. And this is extremely involved and extremely comprehensive policy. There's going to be a lot of
policy. There's going to be a lot of training that needs to take place. It's posted on our website, the policy section as a policy that's under draft. And Mr. Wilson is going to be, is our Title IX Coordinator. So I don't know if he really knows what he got himself into. It's very, like I said, very comprehensive. So that'll take place throughout the district. New postings that'll go up throughout the district to make them more aware. I don't know if Mr. Pearson wants to add to that, but we spent a lot of time going through this.
Nothing to add. That says it all.
Yeah, I, I figured it was, it was, it was a long road to get that policy together. So just by the length of it, I, I just looked at seven pages. So that's probably one of the, the longer of our policies in our book. That being said, is there a motion to dispense with the first reading?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the first reading of the Title IX policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any further questions, any further questions from the committee? Mr. Murray?
Yeah, just, I mean, one is, thank you for all the time spent on this. I'm wondering about, because Mr. Pearson's brought this up in the past, I believe, the red line of this, because I'm, I'm going back, you know, I went back and forth between the previous policy and this one. And it's much easier if there's a red line document. Is there ability that can get that red line?
Yeah. So I, I have a red line of the transformation of this policy, but this, just to be clear, this policy is much different than the old Title IX policy. It was all taken out of the new regulations. So we took, we started with the new regulations that were passed, I believe. It was late spring. So we started with the new regulations. So it, it really, there's, there's very little resemblance to our old policy. So I can give you the red line version of how we transferred, started with the regulations and moved forward. But typically, if it was an old policy that we just revised, but this was a complete rewrite based on the regulations.
All right, fair enough. I mean, if it, if it's too much of a hurdle, I understand if it was a, a complete revamp. I, I didn't see a lot of similarities, but.
Yeah, but what I should have done, and a good point, Mr. Murray, is that typically I should have included the old policy with this. That's what we were doing. So I will make sure that, that I share that. The, you know, you've probably reviewed the old policy, but we just wrote this based on the regulations.
Yeah, I just web searched on our website and I pulled up the old policy. So that's fine. I guess moving forward when we can, provide the red lines if you can, then having at least the old policy is helpful.
No, we can do, we can definitely do that. Like I said, this was, I don't know how many months we spent on this. And we, we tabled it for a little bit and went back to it. But this was, we started with the regulations, the new regulations. So, but, but we'll definitely do that moving forward.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And before I call for a roll vote, I, I don't think there are any hands up and probably there's no questions because most folks haven't read the policy. So.
No hands.
No hands. So could we have a roll call vote, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes. Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. And I assume it'll be on our, the actual policy approval will be on our next agenda. Moving on to number 10, which is the student employee, employment, employee, sorry, relations policy, which again is the sec, a first reading. And a dispense of the first reading. It was our reference number five. Obviously, the policy subcommittee has been busy. And I thank you all so much for your hard work on this. Mr. Levis, did you want to comment on this? Mr. Pearson?
I, I don't have a, a lot of comment on this. This was a bit of a back and forth. I just, I guess we present it as is.
Thank you. Again, another well-written policy that I can appreciate. So is there a motion to dispense with the first reading?
Madam Chair, I make motion to dispense with the first reading of the student employee relation policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian? James Pearson?
Thank you. And the motion carries five to zero. And I assume also, Mr. Levis, that will be posted on our website for the public to read before our next
We, Madam Chair, we post these prior to these meetings so that, so that people can go on. And again, I just want to, you know, the, in these policies, all of our policies, just to be clear, they, we ask for input from not just the policy subcommittee. So this was a policy went back and forth. We had some excellent input from, from, you know, from our administrators, from Ms. Aronakis had some great feedback and we incorporated that into the, the, the policy we put forward.
And again, another question, was this a new policy or did you work from an old one? Is it new?
This is new. Yeah.
I thought so. Yeah. Thank you so much. Moving on then to item number 11, which is the School Building Committee Update Discussion. It was our reference number six. Mr. Murray?
Sure. Can I just jump in before Mr. Murray? I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I just want to say I watched the town council meeting last night. And I just want to, you know, thank Mr. Murray. I thought you did an excellent job last night, very concise. I thought the questions the council asked. And, you know, I just want to state that for the record because, you know, all these committees, as we just acknowledged, Mr. Pearson, the time that's put in, but, you know, the School Building Committee, I, I can't imagine. I don't even want to know the time that Mr. Murray's putting in, but I think he did an excellent job. I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Thank you. And if you liked last night, you can like tonight because it's a very similar presentation.
I saw last night, too.
Yeah. So I mean, for those of you who did tune in last night, I am going to share my screen, but it's a similar presentation of what I'll say tonight. But sure that, you know, we, we keep putting good information out there to the public, whoever tunes in. So I'll try to move forward through this rather quickly, as quickly as possible. If you have questions as you go along, feel free to nudge me or speak up. I'm working three screens and it's tough sometimes to look at everyone on the Zoom forum at the same time. So obviously we're going to give a quick update on what we've been doing for the past approximately two weeks. And if you remember, the last update focused on the middle school, our efforts there as a building committee and moving forward, a substantial renovation concept of the middle school. And this is where we've been primarily focused for the better half of a couple of months. So we wanted to refocus this. We had said all along that the middle school was a big part of our effort, but that we wanted to also focus on the other schools in the district and make sure that we touched all of them in some way, shape or form as part of the stage two and necessity of construction process. And just a reminder to everyone, this is really a process to focus in on the core projects we would like to undertake, to submit a comprehensive report to RIDE so that they can come back to us with potential reimbursements now. So that doesn't mean we're obligated in any way, shape or form moving forward. But it does mean that we would potentially be pre-qualified for reimbursements from the state. And I always say this is the tax dollars coming back to the district. So key items since our last update, so on the eighth, we did have a school building committee meeting and we did review the general framework for the district-wide enhancement strategy. And that's other than the Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School. And we did, and I'll present some of that in a moment. On the ninth, the architect did facilitate a meeting specifically with Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School staff, including teachers, general staff, administrators concerning the interior layout of the building. I know there was a lot of questions from many, asking about what has been waiting at the boots on the ground level. You know, there's people, the teachers in the school, have they had a chance to weigh in on the design? And I can say that they have, and there was some good input from that meeting, which I will go over. And then the most recent development was today, I did have a meeting with the town manager, the finance director, the town's finance advisor, PFM and bond counsel. I felt it was a productive meeting and I'll, I'll kind of review what the contents of that meeting were in a moment. So just to review the district-wide enhancement strategy. So obviously we have the middle school, which we've talked about a lot. We have a lot of other schools that we're in need and we always have money. And that's going to be the case moving forward, even on this effort. We're not going to be able to renovate every school to the way we'd like. However, we'd like to touch school in some way, shape or form with some substantial improvements, substantial enough so we can see those improvements and realize them as a, as a general parent looking at the school. That we, we notice where the money's going. We have to balance always project scope size and the programmatic needs with the real funding constraints we have both at the overall town level, but at the district level and knowing that we can only if we do bond, bond a certain amount. We have certain ceilings we have to hit. So that's a balancing act going forward. And something that I've actively been trying to work on with the building committee and the town side to kind of see what that looks. So quick roll up, we had an extensive school building committee meeting. I believe it was over two hours, our last meeting, just talking about these, these enhancement strategies. So the architect has really proposed what he's deemed the high-impact visual enhancements, HI, at all the school sites. And what is that? Well, that's really looking at exactly what it says, visual enhancements. So things that would be noticeable by the community members when they walk into the school. And these are all desperately needed by many of our schools. So painting all of the schools inside and out, and I mean thoroughly painting, not just a couple of rooms and making fun colors on the walls. And this is really to preserve the life of the building moving forward. Ceiling replacements. So a lot of our tiles are falling in, haven't done, been done in years. So doing, doing those ceiling tile replacements, lighting upgrades, as many of you know, LED technology is now here. We haven't upgraded all of the buildings. We've upgraded the lighting the same time we do the ceiling tiles. Minor exterior upgrades in the parking areas. This was identified by Jason Martin. We do have some parking areas that need some TLC. There wouldn't be major parking improvements, but probably fixing of small patch areas, trying to just upgrade what we can. And select ADA improvements, Americans with Disabilities Act, obviously we'll want to comply with federal law and do those improvements that are necessary. This, another key aspect that the architect mentioned was addressing the NIAS items. And as we all know, the NIAS assessment came out in March. And had noted yet again, the gymnasium floor, the bleachers and some HVAC improvements. HVAC, I'm assuming some of that's going to be taken care of in the near future. But the bleachers and gymnasium floor are not getting any better. And we'd like to address those moving forward to, you know, if we move forward with improvements as part of the necessity of school construction. Other items at the CHS that was recommended were science labs, generator, select improvements to the parking areas, and then again, ADA improvements. So this kind of focuses the core of what the architect had mentioned as far as what we should be looking at. The committee did their job. They pushed back a bit. And I think gave the architect a little bit more direction. While we appreciate the Hive strategy, I think the committee as a whole kind of weighed in and and made sure that the architect also kept on the list some of the critical needs, what I would call the priority ones. So I particularly mentioned the well at Western Coventry, which is turning into a drip at the school. And what I hate to see happen is we paint the walls and make everything look good, and some of these core items are neglected. We will not have shot at bonding again for the foreseeable future. We know we're going to have additional need in the future. But I want to make sure that things get addressed that need to be addressed. And I'm sure Ride will weigh in on this too. Through the design reviews, they're going to ask, you know, is there anything key item that you need to address? So there were some other members who did weigh in on this, and I think the architect tipped at the heart and will be moving forward amending his list accordingly. There was a discussion about whether we should invest more in the Coventry High School. Because as we know, and this came up in recent budget discussions, we're losing, we're shedding students to the districts. There's a number of reasons for that. I've made the point that this is complicated. It's more than just our building. But it has to be duly noted that the facilities matter. And so the architect's taking that under advisement. He's going to look at some ways to maybe improve some critical areas of the school that need to be done to maybe try to change perceptions, I guess, but do some of those high-impact visual enhancements. And we did agree to accept with the concept of limiting investments in the elementary schools until a larger strategy is determined. Western is the kind of an outlier because that school is likely to service the western part of Coventry for the foreseeable future. But we have had discussions about potential consolidation of eastern end schools. And again, as I said to council last night, that needs to be a much larger discussion. Some may agree, some may disagree. But I think at this point, it's prudent to look at that or at least be thinking about that. And we don't have the money to over-invest in facilities, quite honestly, but it's good that we're kind of thinking towards the future. We know we need to make some improvements, but we don't want to, we don't want to overspend. So Dave, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, Luke. Is that long-term? Are we looking at?
So what we, when we start talking about consolidation, we're talking probably in the timeframe of 10 to 15 years. And, and maybe beyond. What we're trying to do right now is crutch through the schools for the next, and I hate to say crutch, because they're not that bad. But, you know, we know there's issues. So if we can get those buildings through the next 10 years, then we will be in a better position to maybe make some of those, those key decisions. And, you know, who knows in 10 years if the same incentives will be around for consolidation and those types of programs. Does that answer your question, Dave?
Thank you, Luke. Thank you so much. It sure does.
Anybody at this point while I'm paused, have any questions? Okay, so I'll move on. So I want to make some key points on the reimbursement because I know this is, is big, not only the building committee, but for the community at large. Current projects, we've talked about all the projects. We had an extensive discussion on the projects that were proposed. And right now it appears that we would qualify for an additional 10% on top of our standard housing aid, which is currently 2.8%. And this is related to educational enhancements that we'd be doing in health and school and CHS qualify for the full 10%. But the way it works is, and, and it's important to realize that the elementary schools would only qualify for that 5%. But the way Ride works, it is if you have a project that qualifies for a higher amount, everything on the list gets lumped into that project at the higher amount. So we lump the high school in with the elementary school projects, everything qualifies for that 10%. So that is what the architect has recommended, that we package the high school and elementary schools in the report as one project. And we call out the middle school as a separate project, which on its own qualifies for the additional 10%. So this could potentially push us up to approximately 53% reimbursement, which as, you know, from a community standpoint, while it's never easy to spend money, it's much easier when you know that somebody's paying half the bill. And that's really where we want, right? We want to maximize our reimbursements. I don't see us being able to maximize it much more because the other incentives really deal with, you know, some of the, like, one of the things is consolidation. We're not consolidating. Usage of the schools, we're, we're currently below utilization. So I think we're, we're not over capacity. So that would be another kicker. So this is probably the max that we could look out for on the reimbursement, but it is substantial and much more substantial than many communities have gotten for their school-related projects. Let me figure out where I'm at here. So I've already mentioned all the lumping. The one thing I do want to mention is we've talked also a lot about and one of the key aspects of the kickers, as I call them, is that we have to commence construction prior December 30th, 2022. And that is a key date because while it sounds pretty far off, if you think about a potential bond referendum, if we were to go for it, would probably be pushed out to the end of 2021, which means that we need to start designing and executing prior to the following year. And for a construction project, that can be difficult, but there are ways to manage this. The architect came up with some creative strategies and we will continue to manage as we move forward. And to the point that we're going to be having a meeting on Thursday with Christine Kennedy, Lita Hall, who are both construction managers, heavy construction managers. and the architect, and we're going to lay out a new schedule through the implementation phase. So I mentioned schedule. We, it's, this is imperative. We need to lay out a clear schedule for the entire project through implementation. And we're at a point now where we've identified significant amount of projects where we can do that and identify key milestones in development. I did want to bring up before I go, the middle school focus session that occurred on the ninth. I did have a chance to just attend and observe. There was over a dozen administrators, teachers, and support staff in that meeting. I think it was very productive. They did participate, and things will be changing on the floor plan of the school as a result. So I always find that as a positive when the staff get a chance to weigh in. We've created, we, the building committee, created the shell of the facility based on some logic from the exterior standpoint and overall visual, but 30,000 foot is all calling. What happens inside is certainly ablely moved and recreated at this point, and we'll continue to do that moving forward. Should we decide to move forward with the stage three, this will continue to be manipulated and tweaked moving forward. So the community will have a chance to provide input. Staff will have additional input. The full big project is not for the stage two. This concept is, gets us to a point where we can kind of submit and get an idea for the reimbursements. Forward. So the financial planning, I added this in, I didn't have this in the presentation last night because it's so new. But we did have a productive meeting with the town's financial advisor, PFM, and the bond council. It was really just myself, the town manager, finance director, the advisor, and the bond council. I asked them key questions, they answered them. The key to it now is Steve Masuroni from PFM really wants us to lay out that schedule. And based on that schedule, he will be able to formulate a financial audit. There's a lot of strategies that we can do to spread the debt over time and spread it to points where we have debt that falls off that's existing. So if we can spread that debt, and we will get a potential authorization if we float a bond, if. That authorization will be for X amount of dollars. But that amount of dollars isn't what we'll borrow immediately. That amount of dollars is authorized. So as the project rolls out, we may issue bonds on a staggered basis. And then they correlate with debt that's falling off. So just like somebody's budget, where you're paying on your car, and the car payment falls off, you're able to pick new debt because you can now have that extra payment to put down. And that's our goal. Our goal is to soften the burden on the taxpayer and then spread this out to a point where we can pick up the reimbursements from the state and really get the best bang for our buck. So I know spending money is always extremely hard, but I want to express to the public, we're trying to be thoughtful and methodical about it and try to lessen the burden. Because it's either pay, you know, I always say pay now or pay later. These school problems are not going away. That 10% is guaranteed to go away in two years. So if we don't take advantage now, that 10%, which may seem insignificant in a percentage, translates to a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money that'd be put into a project that, if done five years from now, will cost us much more. So that's the message I want to keep communicating to the, to the community moving forward, that pay now, pay later, because these problems are not going away. So I did mention, you know, as far as the project schedule from a, from a planning standpoint, you know, I have that Gantt chart schedule. These are the high points. I had to ask the town manager to identify a date for the school committee, town council, and school building committee can all be in the same meeting. I know it'd be rather large, to review the 75% draft report. I'm anticipating that will probably be done after the new year because council has a very aggressive schedule with the budgets coming up. So the, the key here is to allow everybody to cross-talk, ask questions on the stage two draft. Because come the end of January, we'll really be looking for votes from the school committee and the town council to advance this, which are required to advance this to Ride. I've always cautioned, you know, I had a recent discussion with Tony Ferrucci from Warwick. And he's actually not only the CFO there, but he is the head of the building committee. Lucky him, he gets paid for this. But he, he expressed his concern because, or he kind of provided me with guidance and introspective because Warwick went to their first stage two, and the, and the town council, the city council, tabled it. And Ride ended up making them go back through the full process again. And just to put it in perspective, we spent $150,000, which was a grant, mind you, for the stage one report. So, you know, just to, just to put it in perspective, moving forward for our town, hopefully we don't make the same mistake because that had big implications and delayed the process for years, which they're still picking up the pieces now. We already had the meeting with PFM, so for us, we're on schedule. We're going to have some pretty aggressive dates in January to be giving updates to council on a regular basis and also the school committee. So get ready, because I'm going to come back and I'll keep having these updates and sessions through, through January. I'm going to get in front of you so much, you're just going to be tired of me, want to get rid of me. So at this point, I'll entertain any further questions that you may have. Not all at once. Dave?
Yeah. It seems like November 2021 is an important month. And that's when the bond, that's the bond date, right? When we would have to vote on the bond. And I think, you think we should be working on that now?
Well, I want to be, I want to put the caveat out there. There's a lot of things that need to happen before that point, potentially November. If, there's a lot of ifs. So if we get what we expect for, from Ride for a reimbursement commitment, if the town council sees fit to agree to go to legislation for a bond, if that gets moved forward and if it's been put as a special referenda, then yes, November would likely be the date that we'd be looking for. I will tell you that we are looking at communication as a general strategy. I want to thank the superintendent, I had a dialogue with him today. We are looking to get the website put up in fairly short order, and that will be one of the first sites put up through the new website system to communicate to the community. So I kind of feel like, I truly feel like, if you provide people with good information, they're more than equipped to make their own decision. I think this project kind of speaks for itself if we put good information out. So to your point, Dave, yes, it's important that we work on the efforts to get the good information out and look forward and not wait until the last minute. So you're right, we need to start that now.
Thank you, Luke.
Mr. Murray, could you stop sharing your screen so we can see the committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
It's hard to see everybody's expression and whatever. So Dave, you've asked yours. Mrs. Kalunian, did you have anything to add?
That was a very, very impressive presentation, Luke. Good job. I really, it really, it's a huge undertaking, and I really appreciate that you put so much time and effort into it. And hopefully, we can keep moving forward and we can, you know, get that beautiful new school. I guess that's gorgeous. It really is. Really, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalunian. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you to all members of the building committee for the hard work they're putting into this. Thank you, Mr. Murray, for the excellent presentation. This is starting to become tangible. I'm excited. So let's, let's keep moving forward. The more tangible this gets, the more I think the community can, can get behind it and support this. You know, if, if something, something good is coming out of it. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And finally, I did want to thank Mr. Murray myself as well. I did listen to your presentation last night. I, I don't think we could have a better chair of the building committee. You do an excellent job, and the amount of work that you and the members do, mostly your core, as opposed to all of us, is amazing. And I think it's, we're, we're really, really blessed in this community to have the expertise we have on that committee and the fact that we can trust those folks to know and keep us moving forward. Just the schedule alone and the dates and all of the planning really does, does move things forward in a way that makes my heart glad. So again, thank you so much. It's a privilege to be working on the committee with you, but certainly you do a lion's share of a lot of the work. So again, thank you so much. I don't know if there are any community members that have anything to say. I don't see any hands raised.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Then I believe we can move on to our next agenda item, which is the FY21 budget discussion and our approval.
Adam, chair, if I might?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we have a quick five-minute recess for a leg stretch, grab a drink, and bio break if necessary?
Absolutely. We will have a five-minute, we'll see you back at 8:06.
Thank you.
How's that? Thank you. Okay. Okay, it looks like we're almost all back from our little break. If folks could put their videos on, then I'll know everybody is back. Aha. Are you back with us, Mr. Cowitt, or should we just start? What are you thinking?
He'll jump back on.
Okay. All right, then I guess we can continue our discussion with number 12, which was the FY21 budget discussion and approval. And I assume, Mrs. Mandrelli, you're going to start this. Mr. Levis might want to as well.
I'm just going to start first, just quickly.
Okay.
Like I always say, nobody wants to hear me, they always want to hear her. But I just think it's important for everybody to know that, no, we've always said that this budget is fluid, and we've made some really tough decisions. I stated as a superintendent, like, who in their right mind would want to be superintendent where you're saying, we're not going to have sports, we're not going to have activities? And yet, you know, we also heard loud and clear at our joint meeting with the council that it's tough if we were, if we were asking for a certain amount of money and it didn't include our activities and, and, and sports, that that was going to be difficult, you know, to ask for a significant amount of funding, but not to even include that. And we were very honest where we're at. And I just want to thank Ms. Mandrelli, because we talked about the last budget, but some of the major increases we've received. And one of them was transportation. And, you know, we have a proposal that was sent to us from Ocean State that we need to look at. But, you know, Ms. Mandrelli took it upon herself to go and, and to reach out to the statewide provider and was able to get, you know, basically, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ms. Mandrelli, but, you know, basically said, hey, you know, you know, made an argument that we needed, this was not acceptable. And tonight, I think, you know, the outcome of that is presenting some savings, significant savings that we received, you know, just last week, I believe. And, you know, our, our approach has been to share and be completely transparent. We have some additional other sources come in. So we're able tonight to go back to you and say, hey, you know, we're still using our 1.5 of surplus to cover operations, but we have savings and we need things that we want to put back in and have you vote on, and we can move forward with. So I just, again, I want to thank Ms. Mandrelli for that effort, you know? Because despite being in a pandemic, nothing stops. You know, you talked about Mr. Coward, the plans that are going on, the curriculum work that's being done. Nothing stops. And on our financial aspect, we know the situation we're in, but we're working extremely hard for our students and for our families and for our staff and for our community. So I just wanted to thank Ms. Mandrelli for that. This doesn't just happen. So.
Madam Chair, I have one question of Mr. Levis.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Levis, last night, the council tabled the budget, and And were they supposed to give monies to the school committee?
Now, Mr., A, I'm not going to address that. You'd have to address that with the council, and that's not on our agenda. But we know we have a joint meeting with them and I know they have a meeting next Monday night. But I really want Ms. Mandrelli, if it's okay with you, to get into this, some of the new revelations and, you know, open that up for that conversation. So if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mandrelli.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Jim, I don't know if you can put up reference number seven on the screen. And while he's pulling that up, for the most part, and actually, I'm going to have you skip right to page two, please. Oh, down, yeah, right there. Okay. This is really the main part that I wanted to talk about. And for the most part, the budget isn't that much different. You know, we are still looking at using fund balance to plug the operations. So in regards to the discussions with the town, I still think we need to continue moving forward that we need funds from the town, either to cover the COVID costs or be an increase in appropriations for the FY21 budget to replace that use of fund balance. But the biggest change was really on the expenditure side, which we weren't expecting. As we had said that, you know, we had a significant increase in the statewide transportation. We were looking at alternate measures. Ocean State had just provided us a contract with added district transportation costs so that we could really vet those. Like Mr. Levis said, I had reached out to the state because the way that they present their numbers, they kind of just tell you, this is how much you're going to have to pay, and it's a percentage rather than really getting down into the details of how much you're paying for the drivers or the bus by day. It's, it's just not calculated the same way that Ocean State was. So when I had indicated that we were seeking alternate options, and my guess is that most school districts were probably putting the same type of pressure on the state as well because it was completely unaffordable. They had came back and said that their calculations would be coming down significantly because they weren't experiencing the same cost. And I'm sure some of it too is, is to do with the amount of times that we've all been in and out of school. And I'm not sure how that's impacting the actual transportation cost. But the, the good news is their projection came down by about $483,000 from what they had told us. So it was back in line with what we had originally budgeted, slightly over, but, but definitely more in the ballpark of what we had originally budgeted. So by decreasing that statewide transportation expense, I think that it's safe to look forward to moving the extracurricular activities and the sports back into the budget, knowing that, you know, the sports that are being offered are modified, and that's really outside of our control with the extracurricular clubs. We did have the principals go through and give us some ideas that if they could bring clubs back, you know, which ones they would bring back, you know, and, and really reinstate those options. The other item that I would recommend bringing back into the budget is the capital lease for the, for the vehicles. So that would be a five-year lease of five different vehicles for physical plant use. And that would require a town council approval for that capital lease. But I think that that's a, that's an expense that we really can't, can't push down the road much longer. And, and I'm not sure if Jason Martin's on the line, but I think we've heard, we've heard a lot about the condition of the, of the physical plant vehicles. And I think that that's something that we would like to move forward with. As far as the other item that we took out, which was the capital lease for the Chromebooks for grade six through 12, I'm thinking that we may be able to bring those back, but I'd still like to wait a little bit, a little bit longer. There's a significant lag time on getting those devices anyways. So I don't know if it would make that much of a difference if we, if we moved forward right away with those. But I'd like to get into the winter months and see, and see what happens with some of our trends. With having the high school and the middle school on distance learning, either in whole or in part, we are seeing some lower projections for certain costs that we thought would be, you know, off the charts, even with the substitute costs. Also having things like the substitute grant funds that came in are helping that. But we are about to enter into some of our most expensive months, January, February, March, whether it be through, you know, the heating and also just subutilization. So we're still kind of in unknown territory. So that one expense I would like to hold off on for now, bringing it back forward. But I, but I do think that we should move forward with reinstating the sports, the extracurricular and the vehicle lease payment.
Ms. Mandrelli?
Yes.
Does that include the Honors Program at the high school as well?
Yep. So the Honors Program at the high school and the middle school were reinstated previously.
Okay. So the sports are back and the clubs are back.
That would be my recommendation to the, to the committee.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Jim, I think you can take this down unless there's other questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Floria, you've had your comments and questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. We'll go to Luke, Mr. Murray.
Thanks, Sarah. I know that this budget's been well run, so. And you had mentioned the, the, the new amount coming from the state or the reduction. So that's, that's key. With regard to sports, are we carrying the full amount of what we originally had projected for sports? Because I know that, as you mentioned, there's going to be a reduced schedule, reduced activities. So how did you kind of project that out?
So the winter sports, we have somewhat of an idea because there was a little bit more guidance coming through on that. So that is a reduced amount. Spring, I actually left what we would usually pay. Maybe there will be some reductions there, but we also don't know what's going to happen with this second fall sport season that could come into play. So it's slightly less than what we would have paid all year round. And also, not all sports are playing, are running. So we, we did back out for that. With the committee, the spreadsheet that we put together for the winter sports, well, actually, I apologize, I believe I did share that with, with the committee. But I, I can say that again, if you don't have a copy of it, but that we really went down through each sport, crossed it out, everything from officials to transportation, to estimated cleaning costs, supplies, based on the number of games that we expected to play and, and put in a little question if there was potential playoffs. So slightly less than what we would usually run, but I think, I think our, we should be pretty well covered, you know, once we know what's happening with the spring and secondary fall.
And you did provide that list. I know you emailed that out to several community members. So that's essentially what you used as your baseline.
Right.
Okay. And then the, is it the E-Bates program, the rewiring effort? Is that still moving forward?
Yes. So the E-Rate wiring program, and, and I know if Jim wants to speak to this, he can. But we did start to move forward with that with the previous budget adoption. That was one that we definitely had wanted to keep in there to not lose the funding. And I think that will actually be somewhat strategic for FY2022, too, because that, those funds will go away, which is one of the other reasons I'm not super concerned about not bringing the grade six through 12 Chromebooks back this year because I think we'll have capacity next year when we take out the cost for the wiring in the budget.
So it goes a little bit to what I spoke about earlier. You have some pending debt that's going to fall off and you're going to pick up some new, so.
Correct.
All right, good. And just a comment from my last, I'm glad to see that the, well, I'm always glad to see sports and the club programs restored. I think it's, you know, we've all talked about that being part of the basic education program. Unfortunately, it's just one of those, you know, things that ends up being bantered about. But I'm glad to see that come back. But also, I spoke, I think, a couple of meetings ago about the leases. And I think it's a great strategy to start turning over vehicles. Lease programs especially, most cities and towns are going to that kind of setup where you're getting new vehicles in and kind of spreading it out through operating costs. So hopefully, we can continue this investment to get those new vehicles in because as you mentioned, they're pretty deplorable. And I know council mentioned it at our last meeting. So I'm glad to see that restored. So I'm, I'm seeing us still backfilling with the use of fund balance. So my understanding, just so I'm clear, if the council were to provide what looks to be about 1.592, thereabouts, million, we'd be at a net zero and that money would be reallocated to COVID-related expenses. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Floria, for working on this as always. Much appreciated.
Great, thanks, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian.
Sarah, thanks. I, I always appreciate everything you do and you really work hard. I, I really appreciate it and thank you so much. I was a big advocate for the sports and the clubs. I, I think that, you know, especially now with everything going on with COVID, that's something, you know, that's a little, something extra that a child can look forward to. So I appreciate you working hard and getting that in the budget when you could. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. And finally, Mr. Pearson, any comment?
Uh, no, thank you for the update.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you, Ms. Mandrelli, for all the hard work. And I'm just really happy that the transportation cost came in with the savings because that allowed us to restore some things. And I just want the public to, to, to realize that, that it's, it, it, we just didn't somehow magically find the money. And we did what we had to do previously, and it's just by chance and luck that the transportation costs from the state are coming in that much lower that we can now put those things back, which we all cherish, obviously, back into the budget. So again, thank you so much for working on this and, and recommending those things back to us. On the leases on the physical plant vehicles. I think we'll be hard-pressed to make it through the storm on Wednesday into Thursday unless something's done. So I think, I think Jason Martin will be very, very happy in the, in the gentlemen's that plow for us in the, in the school department. I just have one question. Just, who is Coventry Schools on our screen? Does anybody know who that is? Or if that person could unmute themselves and let us know who you are?
That's.
So that's me. I'm actually running a separate instance to record the meeting.
Ah, it probably happened before and I just didn't even notice. But thank you so much, Mr. Murphy.
No problem.
I thought there was a ghost among us. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, Mr. Floria.
Look at the Irish there, Kathy. The look of the Irish.
I don't know. I, I don't know about that, but.
I don't know, Miss Colonian.
I know. Yeah, I know. Right. So are there any comments from the attendees or questions for Budget Director and/or anyone else? I don't see any. So actually, we have to vote on the motion. So is there a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised budget as presented.
I second the motion.
Any further comments from anyone or questions? Anything from the public? I don't see anybody.
No hands.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes. Kathy Patnold?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on to the next budget discussion, which is FY22. I'm not sure I've ever been in this predicament where we've had those two things so closely aligned in the same meeting. So, Mr. Levis, did you want to say anything before we hand it over to Mrs.?
No, I'll, I'll defer to, to Ms. Mandrelli. What would make you think I want to say anything? Come on.
Okay, you're on, Mrs. Mandrelli.
Okay, Jim, can you put up, I think it's reference eight? So you can jump to the next slide. And Mr. Levis, if you want to jump in on any of this, you can. So obviously, this budget discussion is very high level. We're really just getting started. But we will be presenting and discussing with the council on Thursday night. So we did want to start putting some information together. So just the primary educational goals, FY2022, the emphasis on social emotional learning, continued propulsion of the vision of the graduate, district-wide identification and narrowing of achievement and social gaps as a result of COVID-19 stressors, and equitable access of supplies and equipment among all schools, which has been a focus for the past couple of years.
Ms. Mandrelli, can I just add?
Yes.
So I just want to let the committee know that there'll be a presentation going to coordinate with some of the high school educators that presented the vision of the graduate to the, to the school committee when we adopted that and also voted on the new mission statement. They're going to be presenting to the town council probably sometime in January. And I, I had spoken to the town council president. And so that'll help align because we, we talked about this, but we want to make sure that the council is on board and understands the work that's being done because we really believe that'll drive not only our budget, but our whole entire school community moving forward, so.
Okay, going on to the next slide. So factors that we need to monitor, state education aid is going to be a big one. And, and I'll touch base on that in my financial projections. I do have it level funded. And I know on Ride's website, there is an FY2022 with an increase. I'm, I'm hesitant to put anything in there yet because it, it's still reflective of old student data. So as we go along, we will drop that in. And as we've mentioned before, one of the big things that's going to impact the, the entire state of Rhode Island and the country is the way that the USDA rolled out the free lunch for all students, regardless of demographics. That did not, and that didn't require us to collect free and reduced-priced lunch meal applications. And that is a key factor in, in our calculation for state aid. So we will need to see how the state's going to handle that. I would assume that they're going to make some type of one-time adjustment. Otherwise, every district across the state is, is going to see a huge drop in their aid. But that's yet to be determined. And, and really, we need to get the FY21 budget approved, you know, at the state level, too, before we get moving forward. But that's something we'll definitely need to monitor. Benefit claims, you know, I have a 3% increase in there for healthcare right now. We have done a couple of things over the years with healthcare that I think put us in a good situation and dug us out of a hole that we had been in. A few years back, we did a significant increase in our benefit rates. It was, I think, 12 and a half percent. And we also made healthcare changes and the CTA contract that will take place next year. The other component that will play a factor is the elective procedures. And, and really, most doctors' visits were down quite significantly from last spring, really up through this year. We had some high, high months in August and September, but those claims are dwindling down. So I'm actually hoping that the 3% healthcare increase is on the high side because of those factors that, that we've either corrected through, you know, rate stabilization a few years back and some plan design changes. But that's something that we'll, we'll want to monitor. If, if we see a decrease in COVID cases and people start resuming their normal procedures, we'll probably see spikes in claims at the end of the year that could have, and have an impact on the rates. But I'm, I'm hoping for the most part, our, our benefits are actually going to be somewhat stable. SRP negotiations, we did have negotiation meetings. That hasn't been brought forward to school committee or council to ratify. So that would be subject to change, some information in our budget. Ongoing school lunch program budget, we've had some changes that have taken place during the school lunch program this year. But how, how things will look next year, if we resume to normal, that could be an ongoing item that needs to be monitored. Out of district tuition costs, I know we've all talked about this quite a bit. And I, I would say that we are seeing a spike in, in interest in students looking to leave to go out of district. So that could have a negative impact on our, on our expenses. Career and tech pathway program review. And then the maintenance requirement for the Rhode Island general law, which will be 2 and 1/2% of operating expenditures for next year. Jim, if you can go on to the next page, thank you. Jim, if you can go on to the next page, thank you. So this is a little unique, and trying to present the budget this way, we had to kind of present one with the assumption that there would be no additional appropriations for FY2021, and then with the assumption that maybe there would be an additional appropriation, which would increase our local base that we could build upon. So in the first scenario, I'm putting in a 4% increase in local appropriations off of the level funded appropriation amount. In the second budget scenario, I'm putting in a 4% increase off of an appropriation for FY2021 that had about a $1.5 million increase, which was the last figure that I had seen from the town, but I don't know if that is going to go forward or if that was just more in discussion. You'll see there's quite a bit of revenue that we've taken out, so we had to pull out any of the one-time revenue. So that was the ransomware reimbursement, sports and the use of fund balance, which definitely helped in 2021, but leaves a hole for 2022. And then on the salaries and benefits, I would say it was relatively conservative going through those numbers. The, you know, supplies and materials and equipment, we have a modest increase based on an anticipated growth for vendor increases. Purchase services will have the biggest increase due to there are in-district transportation contract cost increase as well as projected out-of-district tuition increases. And then you'll see under the total expenditures, I did add in what we would need to budget for additional maintenance costs above and beyond what we've already accounted for, whether it be through housing aid reimbursement that we'll receive on the money we're spending this year, or the tradespeople's salary and benefits, which count towards that maintenance amount. So the figure that you see is the net increase that I would expect we would need in order to meet that threshold. And then, as you can see at the bottom, you know, we are looking at a projected deficit in both of those scenarios. So, you know, again, this is the first slice, looking at where we're at. Principals and department heads are working on their budgets as we speak. I don't expect too too much of a change in those. Really, a lot of it typically comes down to the salary and benefits. And as people transition out or transition in, and then, you know, on the revenue side, what's going to happen with the local and the state education aid. That actually might be the last slide. Jim, you can go on one more. Trying to think. I think it's the last one, though. Okay, so if there are any questions on any of that information, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you so much, Sarah, as usual, for the good work. Mr. Florio, do you have any questions or comments for Mrs. Manjorelli?
No, I think she did a heck of a job on this. We're going to miss her. And that's all I can say, is that she did an astonishing. She did a wonderful job. And I'm sad she's leaving. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray?
Not gone yet.
Yeah, I know.
If I could, I'd staple you to your desk. I echo Dave's remarks, but I know that you're hanging in there to see us through this budget. So we're going to keep looking forward and try to get this done. I appreciate the fact that you laid out two scenarios. I know there's no perfect scenario here because both are showing a projected deficit, which means we got to cut again. But I appreciate the fact, I see here, the additional maintenance costs, which we've discussed at length recently for the building maintenance and the requirements on that. So it appears for this year, we're at 2 and 1/2% under this budget, and you've included that. So that correlates pretty handily, especially with budget scenario two, on what the deficit would be. And unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, with the state mandate, it's well-intended, as Mr. Pearson usually says, well-intended, poorly executed in some ways because it doesn't, it definitely impacts our operational budget and almost makes us have to go to the maximum just to cover those expenses. So, but I think that's got to be part of the narrative moving forward because the public consistently says we don't put enough into our facilities. We tend to put too much money into the other things. And so if they truly want to put the money where the mouth is, we're including that this cycle, and we will continue to include that. This is the start of a process, so we'll see how this one shakes out. And I appreciate, as always, the work you do. That's all.
Thank you. If I can just add a couple of things too, just before you go on to the rest of the committee. While this is presenting a deficit, you know, as I mentioned, healthcare, I do think that that will come down lower. There are options that we can look to do even for staffing to kind of move some costs, you know, around. I know on paper right now, this looks bad, but from a first slice, I don't feel like we're in a corner yet, is what I'm saying. You know, I didn't adjust for state aid, and I certainly know that that's no guarantee, and we're still in the middle of a pandemic. But from a first slice, although I know it looks bad on paper, but I do just want to say that behind the scenes, I do think that we can, we have more room to wiggle around, you know, than looking at some of the drastic measures I'm hoping for. And a lot of that has to do with making some strategic cuts over the past couple of years, and like I said, bringing benefits back into line. You know, I think that this could be a good building budget going forward, even with how we use some of the COVID money from facilities. You know, we are looking at investing in cleaning equipment and whatnot so that should we have to make adjustments? I don't even want to say this really, but with the custodial staff, you know, knowing that we had to ramp up for COVID, we're trying to put our departments where they can work more efficiently with the materials that they have, even if it's a shorter number of staff, you know, if we get to that point. So I know it doesn't look great on paper, but there is a lot going, there's a lot of good that has happened as well that isn't accurately reflected in those numbers.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Pearson?
Good intentions. Unintended consequences. I think I usually say that. I don't think I'd say the other one. Though they're both kind of true. Thank you. This is good. This is a nice December budget. I will miss a nice December budget. I hope we continue to get them in the future, and I'm sure it's more than the town will show us. Two questions. I'll save the capital question for second. I noticed your state aid numbers looked flat. My concern is, you know, looking at October enrollment numbers year over year, and I know we don't use October in the final calculation, but it is a good barometer of what the March numbers will look at. We're down, what, 150 students year over year for October enrollment? What kind of impact might we expect from that?
Oh, yep. So on RIDE's website right now, they're actually showing our 2022 revenue to be $24,217,000. So on RIDE's website, they're actually saying that I should have an increase of state aid of about $653,000 right now. I put in a level funded state aid because they did that to us last year in October, you know, and we saw that cut. So I will probably leave it level funded until we get a little further along. And that's good for the committee to know because I'm sure members of the council will ask as well because there is a published document on RIDE's website saying that we're getting $24 million. And this is one that we have a lot of discussion about because the enrollment is never updated timely for it. So I'm hoping that me level funding it is capturing any student enrollment swings based on what they're projecting for next year at this time.
Good answer. Second question, well, more of a statement on capital. I think if anything, we've learned over the past few months or so regarding capital and the amount of funding we have to put toward capital. I would like to make sure that, this is for Craig more than Sarah, make sure we pay special attention to capital and our capital improvements list and make sure we're accurately reflecting in the capital improvement program, the kind of work that really needs to be done in this district. It's a sense I get, and I'm not saying anything negative about your staff or Mr. Martin because I know he puts thought and work into it. But we may need to put more thought and work into it and make sure that it's accurately reflected in there, especially items that may be eligible to, for future fair share calculations. I just want to make sure we're not leaving things on the table because until, you know, what was last year? Last year, I think, was the first time since I've been on school committee that we had any capital appropriated, and it wasn't enough to meet the threshold we needed for the state aid, but it was something. And Kathy could probably say there was probably not much before that for the past decade or two. Sorry to give a timeline there, Kathy, but you have been on school committee for 18 years now. Congratulations. So just again, just make sure we don't lose focus on that as well because, you know, operating budget is how the school department operates, and obviously, that's the most important thing. Capital is how we prevent ourselves from having to go out and get multimillion dollar bonds for school improvements for things that should have been fixed years ago. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, can I just add to what Mr. Pearson just said, that point about the capital list? And, I mean, Ms. Manjorelli brought that up when we were receiving some information around impact fees. And that whole process, and again, I don't understand the whole legal process around it, but what I do understand is, and I had a conversation with other individuals, that they look at the entire needs of the entire community. And we, you know, at least on the school side, those needs weren't represented. We all know the Jacobs report had $60 million to repair our schools, not to improve programmatically, just to bring them up to where they should be. And Studio Jade went going through had validated that that's probably up to 70 million now. So what you said, Mr. Pearson, has been heard loud and clear. And the other part, though, when I first started here, it was just a process, you know, and I can't stress enough about the positive dialogue, listening to Mr. Murray last night, the conversation, the questioning. So I'm very comfortable moving forward that, you know, good questions, people will understand what Ms. Manjorelli just indicated about state aid. I think they'll listen to us, and that's my belief. But your point's well taken. We have discussed that, so thank you.
And I'm not singling out the school department. The town side has a lot of work to do in that area as well. I've seen their capital improvement program list, and it's deficient. So they need, they have work to do as well.
Yeah. And I think it was 12 years. When I looked at the list, it had been 12 years since we had received capital. Now, you know, it was just a document that had dates and years and amount of money received, but that's the only documentation we had here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I don't have any comments. Just thank you, Sarah, again, for working on this newer budget, this next fiscal year's budget. And I think we can move on unless any of the attendees have anything to add or ask. I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
None.
All right, then. I think that we can move on to item number 14, which is the COVID-19 update and the district calendar discussion. And I assume, Mr. Levis, you're going to start this.
Yes. Yes, I'm going to. And it's going to be very brief. I mean, one thing I hear a lot is about our school community means I think we do an excellent job making sure the public can have input, but they are long. And I don't know how to balance that. I might be having some internet difficulties too, so I don't know if I'm cutting in or out. I apologize. But what I want to say, we post an updated document on our website. I think you're losing me. Am I back?
We can hear you.
Yeah, maybe you can shut your video off and you'll have a better signal.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Yeah, it says my internet connection is unstable. How's that? Better?
We can hear you better, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. I'll make it quick. We post our data up, as you know, last Thursday morning, last Thursday evening. I made a decision that we were going to go to distance learning, except for some special populations. The data that we have is so fluid, and even the document we have doesn't really report everything because we put on cases that are verified. We have many people that are waiting to be determined, notified if they're going to be on quarantine or not. So, you know, the most important aspect is we're in a community that is double the state average. At last report was 15.3%, and we, it's having an impact. 51% of our employees live in town. You know, I always say that I believe our schools are a safe place. When we come back, I'm going to be, I've requested from RIDE that we'll be able to do testing. We'll have people opt in, both students and staff, but we'll work out a process where we could have testing on a daily basis. And, you know, for those that think our schools are not safe, it'll give some validation. That should be in place hopefully by February. I just received notification yesterday and just an email from the commissioner's office about the calendar when we come back. I haven't had a chance to meet with our administrative team on it. I shared it with the school committee. I shared it with our administrative team and other individuals. But I will be sending an email out to parents tomorrow that looks like, according to the Department of Ed, the earliest we'll come back would be on January 7th. And I want to make sure that parents understand that. I'll put together a letter with more detail. But they're saying that they don't want people back in before January 7th, and you have to be back in by January 15th. And, you know, I've said before, I'm really concerned about the period of time after the holidays that we know people are traveling despite the recommendations, and I'm concerned about that. So we're going to monitor that. And I will give, like I said, I'll send out an email to families tomorrow, being clear about what that may look like. And, but they need to prepare that students may not be in. And I know this is a hardship on everybody. Like I said, making that call last Thursday, if you'd asked me in the morning, and several people did, my plan was to push through this week and get us to next week and then, you know, have us stay out of school, the buildings on that Tuesday. But that quickly how things had transpired. So I think I've been consistent with the messaging. I know, you know, I don't make these decisions lightly. I use a lot of information that I receive, mostly from our medical people. Our nurses have been phenomenal. Our staff has been amazing. You know, some districts are struggling, and even though we have people that are all across the board in terms of their feelings, they show up every day and they're working hard because they care about our students and families in this community, and I can't thank them enough. But we'll keep updating the data. We don't have an update this week yet in terms of how Coventry is compared to the state. It hasn't been updated yet. I know Coventry did testing last Saturday. There was over, almost 950 individuals came to the high school for testing. So I'd be interested to see those results. But like I said, this is something we monitor daily. And as you've seen, all of tonight's been about academics, social, emotional budgets. Life has not stopped. We still have a lot of responsibilities. And so, you know, that's where we stand. We'll keep on informing. I know the committee, I have another email to send out about positives that came in today that I haven't had a chance to send to the committee. I keep the committee informed. Our buildings keep their community informed, and it's just ongoing. It's something we deal with. And, you know, safety of our students and staff is paramount. It's always going to be paramount. We may not agree and disagree, but I think we've been clear about how we make decisions, and we'll continue that way. So that's all I have to say, the COVID and the calendar. But, you know, I do want families, they will be receiving an email information from us tomorrow that clarifies what the commissioner has indicated. But to prepare, have students home through January 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Um, I'll go through the committee. If anybody has any questions, starting with Mr. Florio. Do you have anything concerns?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Murray, any questions?
No questions. Quick comment. Uh, I, like my fellow members, have likely gotten emails about the schedule and distressed parents. And I, I get it. Um, I haven't had a lot of great answers. I know that the administrative team is trying to do the best they can to juggle a very dynamic situation. So there's no broad brush answer I'm able to give to a parent that's somebody who's on an IEP or, or just generally not feeling well with the distance learning situation. For anybody listening, I hope they understand that the support's available through the schools and that's typically the answer provided from the administration is reach out and grab those supports if possible. Um, I empathize with those parents, but it's in tough, you know, I know it's extremely hard. But to continue to be flexible through this because as much as seems under our control, what we find is a lot of it is not. And that means that the state weighs in from the Department of Health on down on many of these situations due to COVID. So just like the calendar that was dropped on us as of yesterday to today. It comes out of the air, we deal with it and we'll adapt and move on, but that's gonna put a lot of kids out, continued. Who may have been out already for weeks. Um, and I know that many of our students have been out for weeks because of staffing issues or contact tracing that just bumped that schedule forward from November, early November. So I've been contacted by some of those parents. So I just wanted to make that, put that out there. Um, I'm sure, again, all of my members, all of the members of the committee are dealing with much of the same, but, uh, I empathize with parents, but try to stay flexible as we move forward. And I wanna thank Mr. Levis and the administrative team for continuing to do the same, trying to adapt and, uh, and make the best of a very difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Kalunian, any comments?
No, not this time.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Pearson, any comments or concerns?
Just comments. Um, well, tons of concerns, I should say, mostly concerns. Now, Mr. Levis and I have had a conversation about this. Already Mr. Coward as well, and I think it was very productive. I, I'd reached out to them as a parent and talking about all the COVID concerns and what Mr. Murray brought up with scheduling and, and it comes down to, um, you know, this is, this is the, the the boy trying to put his fingers in the leaks. You know, you put your finger in, stop one leak and it comes out somewhere else and it's such a challenging year that no matter what you do, there's a new challenge before you, because one, one solution to one problem creates, creates other problems and, and it's a vicious cycle of, of staffing, of positive cases, of distance learning schedules, of hybrid learning schedules, of parents trying to find, you know, trying to work and find care for their children. I, I, I wouldn't want to be Mr. Levis right now trying to sort this out. I'll just leave it at that. So my message, I guess, to families is, is please bear with, please bear with the school department. Please stay safe. Make good decisions, uh, if you can, this holiday season. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And, um, I agree with everything that, uh, my fellow committee members have said. We're in an extremely unpredictable time and if it's not our decision to move forward a particular way, it becomes someone else's above us, like Ride, the governor. So it's very difficult to try to predict what's gonna happen, um, after the holidays and like Mr. Pearson said, we can only hope that, um, folks try to stay and celebrate, you know, in their own family and, um, you know, the two week break sort of after the holiday might help with, um, quarantining some folks before we get back into schools. So that's, that's the best we can hope for. You know, not much more you can say. What I do know is that I am confident that our administration, our teachers, our staff will do the best they can for our students. They've proven it already and, um, I couldn't be more prouder to, to be part of this district. So I thank everyone for all of the work they do. Just the presentation tonight by, uh, Mr. Wilson certainly showed how difficult it is when there's all these moving parts and trying to do what's best for our students, our staff. You know, our teachers, everyone. Um, so I, I do want to thank everyone and, and tell them how much we all really do appreciate all the work that people have, that people are doing. That being said, um, I, oh, I have one hand up. So, um, Mr. Murphy, can you bring that person in?
Kelly, you are up. If you could state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone, please.
Hi, Kelly Aronakis, President Coventry Teachers Alliance. Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me for one second, I, I just want to take time publicly to recognize all the adults that have been in the building since the beginning of school. And that's not just teachers, that's school related personnel, teacher assistants, supervisory assistants, clerks, custodians, maintenance, the tire nine, administrative staff, central office staff. I don't think that people realize as the adults in the building, how stressful this time is. So we hear and we have seen that students get COVID and they bounce back relatively quickly. The same has not been true for adults that get it. And I don't know if anybody realizes that. The fear of when that cough comes in the chest and the ache that you're gonna have to go to the hospital. It's happened to me. I had two students in my classes, two different classes test positive. I'm quarantined for two weeks. I don't think people realize the stress of, okay, I have two kids in my house. I'm by myself. I can't go to the store to get milk. I don't want them to catch it. Every single day an adult walks into the building, the level of stress is just heightened tenfold. Because we're not kids. And I just think that I, sometimes I think when people hear we have staffing issues. You know, Mr. Levis can attest, it's not because staff is calling in sick. So there's no sick outs or anything of that nature. Every staff member that can is coming in every day. The problem is if I have one student, that student had seven different classes of secondary level and seven different teachers that day. And if they were within the teacher within for 15 minutes, which of course they're going to be, you know, the classrooms are very small. Then you could bang out seven teachers with one positive COVID case. You know, teachers, as Mr. Wilson said, you know, we're trying to keep stable pods, but special education teachers have to go into pods and speech pathologists and OTs and PTs. And we're doing the best we can, but I, I just, I just asked the committee to just take a moment to, to, you know, really look at the stress level of the adults during this time, many whom have contracted COVID and have not fared as well as, as, as younger children, many who have had to indulge quarantines and really try to stay away from loved ones and they could be caregivers. Um, and just for, like I said, every adult that's walked into the building, the amount of stress has been incredible. And at the same time, not skipping a beat for their children, uh, making sure that the online learning, the in-person learning, it's just been a phenomenal amount. And now that the holidays are coming, I just hope that everyone is able to try to find a little bit of time to unwind and relax, but, um, from the top down, I just, I really need to commend the adults. Um, and I hope you folks do too. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you so much, Kelly. I, I couldn't agree more with what you've said. I, I, the stress levels, um, have to be through the roof. And that's in a lot of professions, quite honestly. Um, I see it in my own job. People, um, don't have, have the capacity to even go deeper. It's like they're just, they're at the end of their rope. So, um, like you said, I do hope that most of us have some kind of time to take a break and, um, restore some of that, that inner strength that we all have to deal with and, and, and find during these really unpredictable and difficult troubling times. So again, thank you for your comments. I don't, oh, Mr. Coward, did you want to speak?
If, if, if I can have a second, just to put a little bit of, a little bit of data behind what Mrs. Aronakis just said. We use a, a program to track attendance and we have a lot of reports that could come out of that program. And pre-COVID, you know, we would have what they call a fill rate, meaning classes that needed to be, teachers that needed substitutes. We, we fill those vacancies and our fill rate would hover between like 60 to 75%, which is not wonderful. I mean, we've, we've been pretty clear upfront. We've always had a challenge getting enough subs to cover. But our fill, our fill rate dropped significantly over the last number of weeks, whereas this week we're in now and last week, our fill rate was hovering around 20%, meaning we were only filling 20% of the classes that had vacancies. Which requires us to do a lot of creative things to have kids in. And, and so when people think about what staffing means, I think Ms. Aronakis is right. And I think there's data behind that. The other thing I wanted to mention is when we call, uh, teachers out on quarantine or they're out out of abundance of caution due to contact tracing, we, we categorize all those different attendance types in our system. And so there's different categories and the, the category that captures people who are home because of contact tracing, home waiting for their own test results, home waiting for their kid test results. On, on, on any particular day at last week going into this week with several hundred employees waiting. I'm not saying sick. I'm not saying even close to positive. I'm just, just in a holding pattern waiting to get information. More often than not, they get a negative test, they come back to work. But I think sometimes what people don't realize is we, we have a lot of people in that category that can't move until they come with a piece of paper that says they can come in or their child has been cleared, so they can come in. So just to kind of put some data behind Ms. Aronakis, there's, there's, there's quite a bit of information that we look at. So when Mr. Levis says that decision was not made lightly, it was not made lightly. We were running reports. We were looking at the, the attendance. We were looking at what Peg Carroll generates in terms of uh, employees at the different buildings. And you get to a point where you realize you can't operate because it's not safe, because you don't have enough adults to supervise kids. Some parents emailed us when we made that decision and some were not happy. And some, some, uh, were very clear about how unhappy they were in, in their word choices. And, and they said things about how our decision was made and how we looked at this pandemic and, and what we tried to do is make people understand that this was a staffing decision. This had to do with staffing. Uh, that, that was our biggest challenge at that, at this point right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Coward. Did anyone have any further comments on the committee? Um, just raise your hand if you want to.
Can I just add one?
Yep.
So one of the things that I, I think, um, is, is important too is in just listening to what Ms. Aronakis was saying is that and, and I know it may pertain to, to some of, some of you, the committee that, I'll, I'll give an example. You know, we got an email from Ride yesterday, just passive and, and all of a sudden there's a calendar and the letter from the commissioner I shared with the committee. But most of Ride is working from home. I'm dealing with Department of Health contact tracing. They're dealing from home. And so I never forget one moment that when I go in schools, people feel the way they feel. And I, and our staff, you know, a central office staff, um, you know, the governor came out and said, hey, try to work from home if you can in an office, right? And I, my, my approach is we're in every day, but our teachers are in, our custodians are in, our SRP, you know, I mean, everybody's in every day. And yet the world's telling us and I still believe and I'll stay firm that I don't have data and there's no data that says our schools are not safe. Because if there was, it would be closed. But I, I also understand that people feel the way they feel and I have a responsibility for that, you know, so. And I think that's important for the community that, you know, people say, well, at least you have a job, you know, it's like, I'm sorry that this is impacting I'm sorry that people have lost their job. But don't ridicule the work that people are doing because they're passionate about your child. They care about your child, you know? I have people say that to me. Mr. Coward was saying, you know, I mean, one guy said to me, I shouldn't be, I, I don't even deserve the opportunity to do, cook fries in McDonald's. And I said to myself, that's probably a good thing because I'd probably be eating them because I love French fries, you know? But the fact that it matters is I know people are angry and they feel the way they feel. I understand that, you know, my son had COVID. I think I shared that. I lost a cousin that was seven years old to the COVID. So I see this, I experience it like everybody. And yet we, we still are keeping focused. And I think, you know, I'm not looking for any praise. I'm never looking for a pat in the back, but I am for our staff, for everybody that works for me. They've done a phenomenal job and, you know, I just try to be consistent in how I make decisions, whether people like it or not. I know I never, I want to be predictable. I want people to know where I'm coming from. I think that's important, being a community leader. So you know, I, I, I just, these are challenging times. We're all facing it and, and, um, you know, this is the time where we need to pull together, not divide, not push apart. And, and, you know, I, I'm very blessed to work in Coventry. I don't always feel that way, I gotta be honest. But when I step back and reflect it's my truth because of the people that we have in this school community, this community. So these are extremely challenging times, but we, we will get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Um, and thank you for all your comments, everyone. So I guess we can move on to, um, number 15, which is the superintendent's annual and that annual evaluation discussion. I know in your packets, you see the schedule from 2019, if you had a chance to look at it. We are not on schedule. Um, this is an annual evaluation that, um, the school committee is asked to do. It's our responsibility. Um, so, um, I, I did mention it to Mr. Levis a couple of times, you know, my bad for not, um, you know, actually committing to dates, um, sort of like the school building committee does. So, so I, my first question to all of you, I think, is whether or not, um, I'm not whether or not the evaluation instrument we used last time will work again this time. So I just, you know, uh, need a quick, maybe, um, raise your hand if you, or maybe if you just tell me, no, I do, I want to do something different. But if you think the, the former instrument, um, will do a, a fine job again this year. Just raise your hand. I have raised hands. My hand is raised. Okay. So that looks like we have consensus. And I guess I will work with Mr. Levis. Um, I don't know if Mr. Levis knows when he would, um, be able to start with his evaluation, his self-evaluation, his goals. That, this has been an unpredictable year, as you can, a, a, as we all know, and a very busy year. So, um, I, I, that's one of the reasons why I didn't pressure him to come up with a timeline. But I don't think it's fair of, for us not to evaluate him.
Madam Chair, maybe we can meet next week, you and myself then, and we could put this together and a timeline that we can come back, you can come back and present to the, to the school committee.
That works for me. Um, and I don't know if anybody else on the committee would like to join us, but, um, I can, I, I can just do it with Mr. Levis if you'd like. That, is that okay with everyone? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a great plan, uh, Mr. Levis, and we will set up a time and actually come up with a timeline. Great. Thank you. Um, any other comments from the committee or questions? I don't, I'm not gonna go through the whole list of you. I don't see anybody raising their hand. So I guess we can move on to our, our citizens' comments. Are there any comments from the citizens, the attendees of the meeting? I'll give it a few minutes. I don't see any hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
None raised right now.
I think then we can move on to scheduling the next meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, January 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. McDonald?
Kathy Patnold?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray? Luke's gone. Okay.
I'll say yes.
He must have fallen off by accident.
Yeah. Donna Kalunian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for the zero. Um, and finally to our adjournment, adjournment. I have 9:10. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 9:10 PM. And I also have a question after the vote, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, can we raise our hands, um, if we are agreeing to adjourn? Yes, yes. Motion carries. Yes, yes. Motion carries for to zero. And, um, Mr. Florio, what did you have?
Madam Chair, we have a meeting scheduled with the town council for December seventeenth. Is that Thursday? That's Thursday?
It's this coming Thursday, yes.
So we can still do the Zoom even though there's, even though there may be a snowstorm?
Um, that will be a decision made by the town council. So if, if they have to cancel it, I'm sure we'll know. And I just got a quick message from Luke, his computer's shut down. He must have had the same problem as Mrs. Kalunian when he had, because all of a sudden.
Tried to reboot.
They're re, yeah, they're putting their, their, uh, your computers restarts automatically with the new updates. Anyway, all right. Well, good night, everyone, and we'll, we'll see each other shortly, probably next Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, this Thursday.
I mean, this Thursday, not next Thursday, this Thursday. All right. Bye, everyone. Thank you.